Good morning, everybody. We've still got a couple of members that are en route, but we figure we would get started. So at this time, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, May 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. meeting of the Reno City Council. First order of business is the pledge, and if we could have Robert Chisel lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
(inaudible).
Here.
Delgado absent. McKenzie, Jarden.
Here.
Bobzien. Sheevy absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First order of business is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have public comment from Jeff Church today.
Good morning, folks. Jeff Church, run our website, renotaxrevolt.com. Invite you to take a look. So what's Jeff going to talk about today? I've got a few issues. Number one, I'd like the council to consider joining the NRA. And also, I was adopted at a young age by an Army doctor, so I was born poor and then I scored. So I'd like you to join the Right to Life Committee. Both are political advocacy groups. Why do I bring that up? Because there are fourteen-plus Reno memberships, according to the website, in the Reno Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce sounds nice, but it's actually a political advocacy group, and their trade abney, who you all know, is a paid registered lobbyist. So if you're going to belong to one, you should belong to the other. I've asked Carl Hall for a legal opinion, based on the Nevada Constitution and other case law. It would look like that's improper. And whether it's legal or not, it's improper. Number two, AB 375, it passed the Assembly. It's a tax for Washoe County only. We just passed Washoe County one. We don't need more taxes. This is word-for-word written for WC one, except they added the word fees. Now, the word on the street is that fees could be hotel fees. We don't need any more hotel fees, sales tax, property tax, gas tax, et cetera. It's probably a done deal. There's a Senate hearing today at 3:30, but I urge you to oppose that. We just don't need more taxes. It's for flood control. We already pay sales tax for flood control. Number three, I'd like to talk a little bit about those of you that are on the Oversight Protection Committee at Washoe County School District. We were all at the meeting yesterday at the BCC, and I put on the record yesterday that my prediction that when you give people more money, it goes to pay raises. What a perfect example. The COO for Washoe County School District, Pete Eckhart, over four years, got a pay raise of $82,000. Now, that's more money than I make in a year. His pay raise is $82,000 in four years. And meanwhile, he was overlooking the CFO, Tom Szysinski, who got fifty, over $50,000 in pay raises in five years. I wish I could get that. I'm an applicant for the Oversight and Protection Committee with Washoe County School District. I would urge you that you contact them and support my membership, because I will be a good watchdog for the taxpayer money on WC one and other money. I've got a couple of seconds left. A gentle reminder for the parking garage, like you talked about. Let's get a electric car charging station out there. I see heads nodding. Thank you very much. I do notice, over at the county, there's a certain Nissan Leaf that parks there all day long, probably an employee, so I can't get my electric car in there to charge. So we might consider a sign saying, "Two-hour maximum violators will be towed," something like that. And finally, and it is finally, the FAB, the Financial Advisory Board. I was very saddened to see that you took away their responsibility to review all labor contracts. That's just wrong. Labor contracts are the biggest cost to the city.
I don't think we did.
And apparently, Ms. Jardone chose to it. I'm not being critical, but that they will no longer review labor contracts in their entirety, and they should, line by line, dollar by dollar. It's the most important thing that they do. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
You know what? I want to say, I always appreciate Mr. Church's comments. He's a close budgetary watcher, and I appreciate his, the focus he puts on it, even though sometimes I don't come to the same conclusions. I don't, as the liaison to the FAB, I don't think that's an accurate statement, but I will review. Electric charging, that's a, that's an issue. I don't know if the world, everyone who buys an electric car deserves charging everywhere, all the time, everything. Maybe people who ride the bus deserve, you know, something. I, I don't know. That's another comment. I had heard his comments yesterday at the BCC on the chamber memberships, and I do plan on asking our attorney to look into it. I think it has bigger implications in what is the state's anti-donation clause. He referenced Texas case law, and I'd like to drill down on that a little bit further. I spoke against AB 375 last Friday. I agree with you. But you need to do a little fact-checking on your salaries of those school district employees. I think some of those job raises that they've had, and, you know, we don't drill down in personnel matters here, but just my knowledge is that they've had job changes from one organization to another or within that organization. So you may want to go back and do a little look on that. But thank you, Mr. Church, for coming and paying attention to our issues.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Breckus. And I do believe Councilman Bobzien brought up the charging stations.
That was me.
Or was it you?
L. item.
Oh, okay. But I think we might have talked about it at our Friday meeting.
No, we have.
I thought we did.
It's an L. item from last Wednesday, Friday. You might not have been there at that moment, but.
I swear he brought it up. But anyway, and then also, looking into the FAB that you were talking about.
We'll look into that.
I have not heard that. So we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
My name was put out there? From my knowledge, that is not.
Yeah.
Yeah. They do an annual work program to us that we adopt, and so they may have dropped it off, but I don't think so. We'll get copies of the annual work program when it was last adopted, and we'll look at it ourselves, and we'll show it to you, too.
Great. All right. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment today.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. At this time, can I get approval of the agenda? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's start with presentation, discussion for staff regarding city manager overview and recommendations to council regarding fiscal year 2017-18 budget.
And before you start, did, did you send us a memo in the last few days about your proposed proposals?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember for the record, Bill Thomas, acting city manager.
Or maybe it was an attachment to the agenda?
We sent you a staff report.
Staff report.
And I don't know if there's a memo separate from the book.
It was a staff report. I was just having a hard time putting my hands up. Was it attached, then? I'll look. I'll get it.
Yeah, we can, if you'd like another one, we can find a copy.
It was this one. It was attached to the agenda.
Right.
I was just having a hard time. Thank you.
So I will get the pleasure of starting off this very important task of the councils annually to do the budget, and perhaps the most important policy thing that the city staff, working with the council, and ultimately, the council decides as far as the direction for the expenditures of the tax money and other revenues that the city gets. Before we get into a very detailed presentation from the finance and budget staff, I did want to start to give you some foundational information in terms of how we got to where we're at in the recommendation that's coming forward. Bless you.
Thank you.
As the city manager's recommended budget. As you all know, and for the public's benefit, the council ultimately decides where the money's spent and how it's spent, but our process is for the manager to make a recommendation. And I think Robert and his staff will be going through the details of how we got to where we're at. But I did want to start with the strategic priorities, which are on the overhead. The strategic plan, which is developed after much, with much time and energy expended by both the council and the staff, came up with five areas that would be our focus for decision-making moving forward, as far as leading the city. Those being vibrant neighborhoods and public places, well-managed growth, thriving downtown and university district, strong financial condition, and lastly, efficient and dependable business environment. I hope that's not me getting fuzzy there. So with those five strategic priorities, in this year, we did things a little bit different, is instead of having a strategic workshop, because we were moving off of what was adopted as a two-year plan by council, the strategic plan, is we checked in with all the council members individually to get a sense, given those five strategic priority areas, and all the things that are going on in our community, what were the overriding and most important things that the council felt like we needed to address with this budget. So I put up the three things that were identified, and talking to each of you individually, and those are identify and implement solutions to address homelessness, develop a more robust community policing initiative, and seems to be a trend here, the third one is two, because they tied, which is debt reduction and motel inspection program. So before Robert gets into his presentation, and in terms of the way the agenda is written here, we're not really looking for any specific direction at this point, because this really is just the foundational information for the details on the budget. However, it is an opportunity for the council to wish to talk about either the strategic priorities or these three items. But again, this is mostly informational, so both you and the community and the staff understand what's driving this particular budget that's about to be presented.
If you're not looking for direction at this point, when is the council's opportunity to give direction on those budgetary items? And also, number three, debt reduction slash motel inspection program? How are those related as one concept?
They're not really one tie.
Oh.
So there's actually four.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
When we looked at your.
Yeah. Okay. I would, yeah, yeah. Okay. Oh, okay.
It's kind of like when we did our reimagine Reno, ended up with four, even though we asked for three.
Yeah, I get it.
So I, I mean, we can talk about these. I think at the end of the day, clearly, the council's going to be making its decision on what are priorities. This, certainly, you can discuss them, but absent revisiting the strategic plan, we did not do a lot of analysis of the five strategic priorities. And again, this was simply a survey of the council members to get to this. And obviously, something could have changed between the time we did this and today, but at least in terms of the starting point for the staff working on the budget, this is, this is what drove us.
Okay.
This is how we got to the recommendations you're going to hear. So that's really the purpose. After we present how we're going to get there, I think that certainly would be expected that the council will analyze whether or not these were the right four things, and whether we took the right approaches to accomplish those. So at this point, we'll get into the meat of it. I'll ask Robert to move on to item six. Yes.
Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record. I would, at this time, see if there's any additional information for item five before we move to item six.
Item five.
Seeing that there is none, I guess we are moving to item six.
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record. Basically, I'm going to be presenting the fiscal year 2018 budget in a workshop here today. The agenda will be go through the budget. We're going to go through the process. We're going to get into the general fund department budgets. We're going to go through the other non-general funds budgets. We'll go through the CIP and hit the redevelopment agencies. At this time, we are seeking direction from council on the budget, so if you have any adjustments, changes, this is a time we would like to see it. We are planning another workshop on May 9th, if necessary, with final adoption on May 17th. On May 17th, we will need to have full direction, so as of May 9th, that would be the time we are seeking final direction from council to present to you May 17th. May 17th, you adopt the budget, and from there, we present it to the state as part of the state requirement. This is a collaborative effort, and this is a lot of work that was put into this budget. And I'd like to start off by thanking Vicky Van Buren, Gaila Emery, Jill Olson, who have been working tirelessly for the last several months, working on this budget. Without them, we wouldn't have had such a great document in front of you to look at. I'd also like to thank all the departments. This requires a lot of work from every department and every department manager, and that every team within the department has to put their information into this, and I'd like to thank them for responding to our questions over and over again in all the meetings we had with them. They've been very accommodating of our demands, and so I'd like to thank them. It's not with, without its reward, and the reward is hopefully a good, clean budget for FY '18.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question on the schedule?
Go right ahead.
I thought a law was changed, Mr. Chisel, that allows budget adoption to go at a regularly occurring meeting.
Yes, it does, but we still have to have it completed by June 1st.
Okay.
And the reason we selected this was to allow for two workshops.
Okay.
After the workshop, it takes us about a week to get the documents ready to go for us to do it.
Okay.
And so by pushing it to the next council meeting, would give us only four days to get the budget prepared to present, because after you adopt it, there is additional work that is done on our part that needs to be done to complete the state document.
Okay. I just, I'm asking because, again, it can, it's, it's, we've got tuma that morning, and that was a tough, huh?
It's at 1:30. The 17th is in the afternoon at 1:30.
Okay.
Okay. So that is our agenda for today, starting in with the recommended budget. Why prepare a budget? I think you all know and understand why we prepare a budget. It provides a work plan for city operation, converts our plans and policies into services and programs, establishes revenue projections and sets expenditure limitations, and we'll go through the revenue projections as we get into the details. It establishes costs of providing services and programs. So a lot of that goes back to the fee study. Set priorities to determine how resources will be allocated among the services and programs the city wants to provide. It provides budgetary guideline, and last but not least, it's not here, it's required by law. This process, this year, has been a lot different than in prior years. It started off with a 2018 budget workshop, where we did a workshop, gave you an update where '16 ended up, fiscal year '16, where we were in fiscal year '17, and started getting direction from you as to how to prepare the FY '18 budget. From there, we got your information. There was another update in March. We have been working with the departments, actually, since about October, November, developing these budgets, getting program change requests from the departments, getting salary projections, getting capital improvement plans all put together. In March, we did another update with you to update you on fiscal '17 and where we were on the numbers. And today is our first workshop for May 2nd, and if necessary, we'll have another workshop on May 9th with that adoption on May 17th.
Robert.
Yes?
It came out through the state yesterday that they did a more current budget review and were fortunate enough to have a $96 million bump. Are we experiencing any budget improvements in recent looks?
Yes, we are. However, probably not, you know, of course, their budget is bigger, so percentage-wise, it, it looks, dollar-wise, looks a lot better than a small city of Reno or another local government. We, we have built these projections, and I'll go through each of the revenue projections that we built into the numbers. Would like to think this year, we're looking like we're about 99% accurate on our budget projections, and so we're hoping next year will be good as that. Of course, we always hope for more revenue. The state has historically been a little bit, not as timely as us to prepare the projections, so as we get into those, I, I think that'd be an opportunity to have a discussion on each of those revenue line items. You also got to remember, their revenue line items are a different mix than ours. A lot of ours is tied to property tax, which had a big hit this year. It only had a 0.2% increase, so it kind of has delayed a lot of increases that we would have had. They have a lot more, the commerce tax and other taxes that are in.
So you don't have any exciting, I found, $20 million for the city of Reno?
No, unfortunately, we, we shook the cushions of the couch, and there weren't $96 million sitting there.
Or even $1 million? So what we've got is what we've got.
What we got is what we got, but as we get into those revenue projections, I think we have a very good, solid budget. Fiscally. we have a very good, solid budget, fiscally constrained, fiscally smart, and I think it's going to get us some opportunity to add some staff to address perfect areas that we need to address, such as public safety, downtown, and motels.
Okay, I still like you, but...
Okay, well, and if revenues come in better, we can always come back and augment. So here, ooh. Uh-oh. That didn't come across right. We have a problem. Yeah, we can maybe just, let's, can we go to this? There we go. Yeah, for some reason, the PowerPoint did not like the percentage. We're going to go through the budget. This is the entire budget by fund type for the city of Reno. This includes ending fund balance, so the numbers will look higher than the expenditures because of that. We have a number of funds within the city of Reno that meet different uses and needs. General fund, of course, is what most people think of when they think of city government. However, there are a lot of other funds out there. The next biggest one is our sewer fund, and then after that is our street fund. We'll also be going through our fleet fund, our building permit fund, risk management, our self-insured medical. We self-insure our medical insurance. We have our workers' comp, RDA, and then we'll get into CDBG and CAC and other revenues. Okay, for general fund revenues, let's just stick to this. Your PowerPoint, their PowerPoint's messed up. Go to the next. I apologize. No, we actually did not budget for that, but we can... These are our general fund revenues for the general fund. Most of the general fund revenues come from C-tax. C-tax is a basket of local government taxes. It comprises 2.25% of sales tax, government services tax, that's your tax on your car, real property transfer tax, portions of liquor, and a portion of the cigarette tax, which is then distributed to the local government and to us. We're projecting $62 million next year. Our property tax, we're projecting is the next biggest item, $48 million. And after that, it's our franchise fees and licenses and permits, primarily our business license, as you see those numbers there. All right, here is where we get into the detail of the revenues. Property tax, we're projecting a 3.5% increase in property tax. The state numbers that we projected were 2.6% from the state of Nevada. We are projecting a little higher, at 3.5%. So we're cautiously optimistic in that area. For licenses and permits, which is basically our business license, you're seeing basically a flat number. A lot of that has to do with where there's some unknowns as to how we're going to deal with the business license for the warehousing. So once that is determined, there may be opportunities within that to adjust that business license number. Franchise fees were actually showing flat. Unfortunately, in the prior years, we've been seeing a general decline in franchise fees. Franchise fees numbers have been declining since about 2014, 2015 timeframe, and so we're projecting them flat. Franchise fees are fees on electric and gas, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on who you are. The electric rates and gas rates have gone down, and as it is a percentage, those numbers have declined. Telephone is another franchise fees, and unfortunately, that's not a growth industry, so those franchise fees have been fairly soft of late. Consolidated tax, you're seeing a 4% increase in there. We're seeing about a 6% increase this year in C-tax. We're projecting 4% for next year, which I think is a good, oops.
Oh, there.
Good number. And intergovernmental and charges for services, one of the things you'll see, the decline there, it's really not a decline, but part of it is, we do not budget our grants until we actually get the grant. So you will see numbers declining there. It's primarily due to the grants that we're not budgeting. When we get the grants, we raise both the expenditure and the revenue, but because we don't, until we have the grants, we don't budget for them. Same thing for charges for services, a lot of that is the strike teams. The fire strike teams that go out, we get reimbursed for, we don't budget for, you know, strike team fires, so. Fines and forfeitures, seeing, continuing to see declines in that. Miscellaneous transfers is essentially flat. So that is our budget for the revenues. General fund revenue history, just kind of giving you an overall view of where we have been during the recession and as we work ourselves out of it. I'd like to note, we're still below where we were in 2008 and 2009. So even though the recession is essentially over, it is still having impact on government and our revenue sources. General fund expenditures kind of matches, of course, the revenues, because unlike the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget. For expenditures, what we're seeing here is salaries and benefits. When we budget for salaries and benefits, we actually budget to the actual person, going to when they're going to get their steps, what their increases are. So we build those actual numbers in, and then we calculate as salary savings, because not everyone stays the full year, so, yes.
Question on that, if I may. Does this include the new positions, or is this existing?
Yes, it includes the new positions that are proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, you'll see, you'll say, hey, salaries are actually not increasing at the same rate as benefits. Part of that is, again, those strike teams and those grant positions kind of change the dynamic. When a firefighter is on a strike team, it's overtime, and we get reimbursed at the overtime rate. The benefits still stay there, no matter whether they're on overtime or not. Overtime doesn't have the same benefit rate, so that's why you'll see a lot of changes. Plus, we increased the health insurance, 5% January 1st, so you saw an increase in health insurance that's going to be for the full year. We did not increase anything for health insurance for this fiscal year. We're projecting that we will not need to, or if necessary, would adjust benefits. Supplies and services and capital are essentially flat. Stabilization and contingency, right now, we have about $328,000 left. We project that will not be touched. Out of the 2.1 million, we're projecting, recommending a $1 million contingency in this manager recommended budget. The fund transfers and debt services, one of the things that has decreased is the transfer to the event center bonds. Should be happy to note, as room tax has increased, we've been able to decrease that transfer amount by about $300,000. And this just takes another slice of our general fund expenditures by category. As you can see, about 81% are people. You know, what we do is provide services to our citizens, so of course, you're going to see a lot of people there, so that's where the expenses are going. Yes? Room tax is its own fund? Yes, it'll be later, yes.
May I ask a question along those same lines? On property tax, we're at the cap, the statutory cap, correct?
Yes, we are at 366 for...
Okay, I was not aware that there was a business license cap. How short on the business license cap are we?
There's a business license cap on gross receipts, and there's a calculation that how much you can raise that. And I believe we are at the cap for gross receipts for business license. Now for the fixed, we are not at the cap.
But there is a cap?
Yes.
You could let us know how shy we are on that cap?
Yes, we could.
Okay.
We'll get you that information.
And then on the room tax, that's another question. Because the general fund was paying those bonds that were backed by room tax for so many years, is there a way for the council to then journal voucher back or make hold the general fund from those room tax?
I would have to defer to our legal counsel on that. I do not believe so, because the bonds, as they were issued, were issued with the revenues pledged from C-tax and the room tax. Room tax, of course, was first. C-tax was secondary. To do that, we would have to set up some sort of loan program, and we have not done that as of today.
Never did that, okay.
That's something that we could discuss with our bond counsel and with legal counsel to see if there's a method, but because of the way the bonds were pledged, I would probably...
Okay, okay.
But it's something we could look into. Oh, I'm sorry, it's benefits and OPEB, other post-employment benefits. And then the same, same general fund expenditures divvied up by department. Public safety is, which is our police, our fire, and our dispatch, comprises 64% of that budget, and then you see everybody else there, so. General fund balance history, as we go through, just kind of showing you the general fund balance over time. And now we're going to get into our recommendations for the general fund. The city managers recommended for FY18 has an addition of 11 employees to be added to the city. They are including, from the general fund, a code enforcement officer, five police officers, and one sergeant. Those, the police officer and sergeant would be starting January 1st. From the CAC fund, we would be adding a program assistant. You saw a presentation on that last month. From room tax, Parks and Recreation and Community Services would have a senior irrigation technician starting January 1st. And then from the sewer fund, we would have a water reclamation facility supervisor at the stead plant, and a maintenance technician for lift stations and other maintenance activities.
Were you going to cover the additional person for the motel program?
Yeah, I was just about to get to that.
So can I, may I ask a question just for clarification on that? So out of the general fund, seven new positions, six police, one code.
Trying to go back. There we go. From the general fund, a code enforcement officer, five police officers, and one sergeant, seven.
Okay, I understand a sergeant is in a different role than police, but, okay, so that's the only thing out of the general fund at this time. I hear you may be adding one other position, but six police, one code.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and if we look at this, the six police officers, the five officers, one sergeant, don't start until January, so this is going to be actually a reduction in our police hiring until January, because we don't have funding for over-hire in here, which is the way that our departments, our public safety departments are able to pre-fill positions, as long as it takes for those positions to get filled. They need to have people in the pipeline, ready to take the vacant position, or we end up with extended vacancies. And with no budget for over-hire in there, this is going to be a six-officer reduction until the first of the year, at which time we'll have funding to hire for those positions. So it'll be an actual six-year, or six-person reduction in the police department for a full year, because January 1st, we can go out and hire those guys, it's going to take 18 months to get them onto the streets, so we'll have a reduction in our police department by six officers for a year, under the, under the way that this is proposed.
Well, first of all, I want the council to have all their comments, but I'm thinking that we should let you finish the presentation, and then we can come back and...
I think we should take it in chunks, you know? I mean, if he's, if we're moving along the positions, and then we go to the enterprise fund, you know, I think we should take it at chunks.
I kind of want to be able to hear the rest of the story, so that's just kind of my thought on this. Go ahead.
I do, well, I think debate is lively and important on these particular matters. I do think it's helpful to see how all the pieces fit together. That would be the advantage of waiting until the presentations, you can see what decisions were made to result in what enhancements, and then that might give you some understanding as to why things were done the way they were done. That would be the upside. As far as this particular issue, which clearly we need to talk about, there is an advantage also to going forward, because the chief had a, an engagement which delayed his participation, and I think it would be very valuable to have the police chief in on that conversation.
And I definitely think he should be here, so we can ask him questions as well. So I would like you to continue to go ahead, and then we'll take council comments and questions, okay? Go right ahead.
So there is one other position that came up 11th hour that's not shown here, and it wouldn't be from the general fund, it would be from the building enterprise fund. In looking at what was needed, or what is needed to deal with motels and the comprehensive inspection program that's contemplated by staff, there would need to be an additional building inspector, we feel, to also complement the code inspector. So that would be an item when you see the budget next time, that the staff would add in, assuming the council agrees with that. It is important to point out, and this will be part of the conversation later, but remember that the code enforcement officer is dependent on programmatically making a change in terms of revenues related to parking meter fees. So absent that policy decision to raise the parking meter fees, there wouldn't be money in the manager's budget for that code officer.
Could we have further?
I can get that for you very quickly. It's going to be more the first year because of computers and cars, but my guess is it's probably around $70,000, $80,000 a year with salary and benefit.
Right here, we're listing the salaries and the enhancements. We're going to get into, we'll list where the vehicles are that are associated with them, so this is the salary and benefits for each of it. It'll probably, depending on when the individual starts, probably be in that $70,000 salary range, and then there will be a vehicle and other equipment that would have to be added. That would have to come from the building enterprise fund, because as a building inspector, it's a building enterprise.
Could we talk a little bit more about this motel inspection program at this juncture?
Again, I would ask, I think we need to talk about that in detail, and we're prepared to talk about that more specifically, but if we can paint the whole picture of the budget, I think it would be very beneficial for the council to understand where the pieces that can be moved, if you want to go a different direction.
Okay, it's a new initiative, I just want to make sure we don't lose the opportunity to discuss that.
We're going to discuss everything, but I do want to be able to let Mr. Chisel get through his presentation. That's not a lot of interruptions.
Kind of doing an overview, high level, and then we'll get into each department, and that may be an opportunity to talk about each department as we go through them, as we get into them more detail. So those are the 11 positions plus the new, new proposed code inspector for the motel program. Recommended enhancements, from the, starting with the general fund, we have, these are the enhancements that we have recommended. From the general fund, there's about $881,000 of additional enhancements. I'll go quickly through them. Increased noticing costs, those are legal notices that we have to provide for meetings. Document destruction, uh, we're attempting to improve our destruction and record retention documents. So we need additional revenue or additional funds to destroy our documents that are timed out. Uh, increased training funds, training is important to this organization and that, uh, was identified as a need. The next item is the city manager downtown maintenance organization. Uh, this is proposed at thirty-nine thousand. As has been discussed, it, there may be monies coming in from private sector, so that number may be adjusted as we go forward. We budgeted thirty-nine thousand, uh, based on the manager's recommendation of what it would cost to get the DMO started up. You will see a couple other places where the downtown maintenance organization is funded. Uh, Reno sesquicentennial celebration, seventy-five hundred dollars for that. Uh, a financial system module, twenty-one thousand, one hundred, that is a analytics system for our financial and payroll system. Uh, financial statement, inter, a financial system, not statement, system interfaces. That's from our parking meter system that we just implemented and our parks and recreation system to interface with our financial system. Uh, in community development, uh, interface between Acela, the, we just implemented Acela into our financial statement. You'll also see a portion of that coming from the building enterprise fund because a portion of Acela is, uh, associated with building enterprise. Some additional overtime to complete the Acela program. Uh, as we complete the master plan, there may be a need for potential noticing, so we're adding thirty thousand dollars for master plan noticing. Uh, for Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, there is the, uh, regional plan update that will TMRPA approved. Uh, here you will see the community development vehicle supplies for new position. This is the supplies for that, uh, code enforcement officer we talked about. Then you see for police, the vehicles and supplies for the new position, uh, positions in police, uh, adding those for, uh, the police. Uh, municipal court, increase in training funds, five thousand dollars. Public works, maintenance costs for our new parking meter syst, or parking ticket dispenser system that's over in the garage. Uh, and based on the damages it's been having, I'm sure Public Works will make well, good use of that money. Uh, tree mapping software for parks, uh, a couple of years ago, we had a grant to map all of the trees within the city of Reno and this is to put the system online for people to use. Uh, here's the second part of the downtown maintenance organization you're seeing. It's a three hundred and twelve thousand dollar, um, uh, addition for the DMO from the general fund. Then from technology maintenance on new financial, uh, system module, five, fifty-four hundred. Additional Acela licenses, fifty thousand. And severance for a critical position, we're going to have a retirement in that area. We are really only one debt, deep in, um, technology, so we need, uh, to have some overlap. Um, so those are the enhancements from the general fund. Enhancements from the other funds above and beyond is the, the third time you're going to see downtown maintenance organization, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred from the, uh, room tax. And then from the parks portion of the room tax, uh, a vehicle and supplies for a new position. That is the, um, senior irrigation position. Uh, mowing and weed abatement, additional money for contracting for mowing and weed abatement, particularly in this year of when it actually rained. Uh, and new parks, uh, cameras for eleven parks. And then in the street fund, we will see, um, enhancements for weed abatement of sixty-three thousand. A portion of a skid steer, you'll see the other half of the skid steer in sewer. Uh, in the sewer fund, um, we have temporary, uh, staffing money for litigation. We're in the process of, uh, uh, litigation over piping and hopefully this will be the final year. Uh, we need to, uh, hire back a retiree that has the knowledge. Uh, temporary staff for various projects in the sewer fund, thirty-one thousand. Vehicle for new position, that was that maintenance technician you saw, that's a hundred and ten thousand. And then the other half of the skid steer in the building permit fund. We're going to increase training funds for, uh, building enterprise fund. Uh, Title eighteen update, a hundred and fifty thousand is budgeted for the Title eighteen update. Upgrade two inspector positions, um, and then purchase the Acela financial statement interface. This is the building enterprise portion of the general fund Acela interface. And then health review permit assistance to help with the permitting and through the health department. And those are the enhancements, um, that we have and, uh, for, that we have proposed in the city manager's budget. Next, we're going to go through each of the departments and that may be a good time to get into some detail as to what we're doing. Uh, we're going to go through in alphabetical order. First off is the city attorney. Um, in this presentation, we're going to quickly go through the organization. You'll see the org chart. Uh, you'll go through, we'll present the budget and we'll highlight any changes in the budget, whether increase or decrease that you will see for that department. Also in your book, uh, we're not going to go through all the detail, but you'll see, uh, numbers that show the FY sixteen actuals. It'll show your seventeen adopted, seventeen estimated numbers, what we're recommending, uh, the manager's recommendation for fiscal year eighteen, the number of positions in that department. You'll also see some very important information in there, the mission, the vision, the accomplishments of the department, uh, the major issues and strategies of the department, a program summary and their performance measures. So, starting with the city attorney, uh, the city attorney's office consists of twenty-nine full-time equivalents. The salaries and budget, uh, salaries and benefits, I'm sorry, salaries and benefits, uh, for the, uh, department are increasing slightly. Uh, they, again, we budget based on where they are in their grade and step, looking at the individual and match exactly when those increases take place. Uh, group insurance, you will see those numbers repeated or that phrase repeated in probably every department. Uh, group insurance increase was the five percent increase January one. You're going to see a full five percent increase next fiscal year because for this year, it's only six months. A risk premium reinstated to twenty-sixteen le, levels. This year, we actually decreased our risk premium that we charged each department, um, and kind of had a, a premium holiday. Uh, next year, it's just reinstated to what twenty-sixteen levels were.
Robert?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have a question as well.
And just a, a risk fund, as we noted there, will be reviewed with the non-general funds. So we'll go into detail on the risk fund at that time. Yes?
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, um, and correct me if I'm wrong in going through these materials. It looked like in most departments, services and supplies went down, but this one, this one's going up, can you explain?
Primarily, it was the risk premium reinstatement is why you'll see the changes. What we'll do is when the others go down, you'll see them go down because we took one-time items out. Um, so if there's a one-time item that was out, um, it's, it's all risk. It's all the risk premium changed.
Okay, and that's in services and supplies, okay, okay. And we'll see that in the risk fund, you'll get to the risk fund itself, okay.
The risk fund had, you know, was doing fairly well. Um, we had, you know, reduced risk costs and, uh, we're back to kind of, you know, it cycles up and down, so.
Councilwoman Doerr. No, I think, I think it's appropriate now as we dive into each department.
Robert's, Robert's done giving you kind of the big picture of what we're doing with the revenues, how we structured a budget to accomplish certain programmatic changes. So now it will be department by department. This is probably the best place because then you can hear from, uh, for example, the city attorney because he's the one that, probably other than the risk fund, can answer any questions about his department best.
So, Robert, a question is, I, just skimming through, uh, various, the salaries and wages are all going up and down, uh, up a little bit different. So this cut group, seven percent, some are four, some are five, some are three. Could you just explain that?
Well, if, if, every department has a different mix of employees.
Right, but in this case, we have no new positions, so I just wondered, this was a good case where nothing's changing, except whatever you're going to tell us.
Well, I, I, what we do, uh, on a, for all of our employees, we go through and look and say, uh, Wilma Flintstone started on January one, she's going to get a five percent increase January one, assuming gets a satisfactory review. So we budget that there's, will be a, she, she will get a five percent increase January one. So her salary will go from a hundred dollars to a hundred and five dollars.
Right, so I have just a couple quick questions. So there, so you've embedded a step increase in here, in their position?
For, yeah, we go through every individual, yes, we assume that they're.
So, in this case, uh, are the steps different amounts in each department for different jobs?
No, most of them, they're all five percent.
Okay, so does that mean that, that's, that's like a raise, I guess? I mean, it's like a cost of living raise or something, or what do you consider it? Time and position?
Depends on, if I, the steps are just built in.
Yeah.
COLAs are separate from the steps.
But I mean, do you get a step automatically and then they stop? Just explain how it worked, for five years or something?
Uh, depends on the bargaining group. Some have five steps. Uh, we have up to eight steps with one of our bargaining groups is eight steps.
Five to eight steps. And then one more question. I know these, uh, attorneys, I don't think are in a bargaining group, at least I don't think they are. So my question is, have you calculated anything for any additional increase, like, uh, CPI? Uh, that's my first question. Yes, on top of the step increase?
Yes.
So what is that? Oh, we're not allowed to say?
We, I would, uh, we budgeted what we think the manager perhaps would be looking at for this year. A lot depends on what the manager actually does.
Okay, is it different for each group or is it the across the board?
It is budgeted differently for every group. Those that have contracts, we use the actual contract.
Okay.
We are right now in labor negotiations with two groups, RAPG Pro.
Yeah.
And Local Thirty-Nine. And depending on how those come out, we will, will drive the budget for the non-represented in a lot of ways.
Okay, so one last question.
As we look at them, we'll, we'll probably take a look at, sit down with the manager and come up with a number. Uh, I, I would say, I, I would hesitate to say because that would give away our.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to know what was embedded in here roughly, steps, some assignment for CPI. And then last question on the salaries is, are there embedded in here, um, let's say there's a, in this case, attorney one. And someone says they're doing a really great job and we want to budget for them to be an attorney two. Is that embedded in here?
That is not embedded.
Okay, so if they do, something like that comes up during the year, how, how is that handled?
Well, we would sit with the city attorney and go through their budget and say.
Do you have space in your budget for this?
To change this. Maybe he has somebody going from attorney one to attorney two, but somebody going from, uh, that's attorney three that may be leaving and he's replacing with attorney one or makes some changes.
Across the board, as we go through all of these on salary and wages, you've got step increases, they might be different in different departments, but they're ru, roughly five percent. You've got some number embedded for CPI or labor agreement adjustment. And you don't have reclassifications, uh, for, uh, um, oh, let's call it a promotion, for lack of a better word.
We do not budget in reclassifications, except for you will see for like, bu, building enterprise fund, we have a couple inspectors, we budget in it. So if we, we know we're going to budget, we do budget.
Okay, thanks.
City manager Thomas.
So just a point of clarification, which I think is important right now, is these step increases are not automatic. They are part of the, um, labor contracts, which typically means they have to do satisfactory performance.
Okay.
I think the assumption is that the employee would be satisfactory, but is not compelled. It is not a cost of living adjustment. So, um, we don't consider it that, nor is that referenced typically as a cost of living. It's part of the bargaining agreement.
Got it. We have a separate CPI, cost of living, COLA considered, it sounds like.
Right, and again, it's a bud, this is a plan, right, a budgeting plan.
Of course.
So we don't want to assume nothing and then find ourselves short, but we also don't want to.
It's just trying to understand all these assumptions that the budget's built on, that's all.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think some of the discussion that we need to have that has come up over the last year are some parameters, not, not general to any budget item or so on. And I think there's a couple parameters that would be ripe to talk about right now. One is the city attorney parameter. He's independent, he should be able to move around resources as he likes. My question is, what is his procurement amount? Is it up to fifty like the city manager? He's got twenty-five like a department head?
He is twenty-five thousand.
Like a department head, okay, okay. That's fine, that's fine. I mean, I'm comfortable with the discretion and the movability that the city attorney's office has, but I, um, for the other departments, and maybe it would apply for the city department, our city attorney is, I think whatever staff complement we have adopt now, you know, for attorney ones or for building inspector ones, that's what it is. And just like the county agendas come back, if someone during mid-year has room in their services and supplies budget and decides, I don't need, you know, this new copy machine, I want to upgrade the building one to a building two, here's twelve thousand dollars. Um, I'm going to take out this year's budget. I think we should be approving it. Um, and that's what the county does, every agenda item, they're upgrading or class, reclassifying positions. Particularly because if, if a department head decides they want to go from a, a, a building inspector one to a building inspector two out of their services, supplies budget for that FY, next FY, that's a pullout of their services and supplies and their salaries are going up. And their salaries are going up after that change that we have not approved. And so that's what gets baked into the budget the next year. So I know last year, we asked for a quarterly report of what's been changed. I think this time, we should put parameters around and whatever we approve at this point, it's a compliment. And any changes, reclassifications, it's just a council, um, ratification of that manager direction. We had this discussion last year, we went with the other way, but I'm bringing it up again for a yes or no, is this how we want to go?
Mr. Bill Thomas.
I think that's a very important concept in terms of how the city is run as an organization. It's certainly different from what I am familiar with and what's been done in the past. Um, I would suggest that if you make that fundamental decision, that would be a good conversation to have with your new city manager because, um, it's, it's very different from taking department heads and saying to them, your mission is to take care of this business and here's the money to do it. You do what you need to to succeed versus a, um, council oversight of every person in a department and having to approve the, um, ability for a manager to respond. But again, I think it is an important conversation because it fundamentally changes the way that the manager handles staffing and decision-making. But again, I would suggest that the right time to have that conversation is now and between, between now and the time you have the budget when your new city manager is here.
Okay. I think that's fair. I think that's fair. Go right ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, I don't think it's near as important as, as long as we don't have to adjust a, a department's budget. Uh, if we're in mid-year and there's advancements or pay increases or changes of classification that require us to adjust that department's budget, it becomes pretty problematic to the bottom line then. As long as they can do those within the, the budget, we're going to look at them the following year when we do budget approvals and we're going to see if that, the budget can sustain the advancements they did. That's something that maybe the department heads need to think about a little bit. As we look at, at our revenues going forward, if they're going to advance a bunch of people in the following year, we can't sustain their budget. Then they're going to end up losing some people or, or something of that nature. That's probably something they need to think ahead for. And we've got a, we've, we've got a department that has some autonomy within the city that, this is a serious discussion we're going to have to have when we get there uh, because there's a discussion going on now that may blow the, that department's budget completely up. And, and I, I don't believe that it's appropriate to, to make us adjust the overall city budget to meet a department's demands. If you've got what you got, live with it and come forward next year and ask for more if you need it. And if there's avail, uh, room in the budget at that time, then, then we'll give it to you. But, uh, I, I say the, the individual advancements within a department are not near as important to me as they do business, but when it comes to budget time, they need to be able to live within their budget.
One minute. Go right ahead.
Yeah, uh, and I'm perfectly, uh, willing to wait to the, the new city managers here to dive into it. I'm just going to make one point. Um, we're, we're programming for. to dive into it. I'm just gonna make one point. Um, we're, we're programming for an initiative, like the motel initiative. And what I would be, where my concern comes in is, let's say we go to hire these people, um, it's a code enforcement person and a building inspector, uh, the department says no, um, and this has already happened the last two years, which is why I'm very sensitive to it. We, we, we had an initiative, we, we hired people to do it, but the people got transferred to a different initiative. And that's my main concern. It's not what level they are, it's not, it's not, uh, you know, uh, dealing at the, at the small individual level. It's just making sure that if we have an initiative, it's moving out as we expected. And so, I just, when we get to that conversation with the manager, which I do think is a good place to have it, that's gonna be my main concern.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to city clerk. Uh, city clerk consists of eight full-time equivalent positions. Um, again, salaries and wages, benefits, um, a lot of that is, again, the five percent increase and the salary increases that are going up. Uh, services and supplies, uh, went down partly re, a risk premium insurance was reinstated, but we removed the election costs. Uh, for every other year, we put in money for election costs. Uh, then there was the add of the noticing costs, document destruction, and training. Any questions about our city clerk? Next, um, city council. Didn't really have an order chart. You are, you are you. Um, in the city council's budget, uh, there, there's a three percent increase. Uh, it's a little bit, actually a little less than that, but there increases the, based on the CPI. Um, benefits increase and services and supplies, um, that is due to, uh, moved money from Sierra Arts to, uh, arts and culture, and also decreased, uh, council donations, uh, ten thousand each. So, there was a decrease proposed in the manager's budget of seventy thousand dollars.
Go right ahead. Vice Mayor Dar.
Thank you very much. Um, so, our donation travel fund was cut in half.
Prior to this, there was thirty thousand dollars for each, uh, council member. Twenty was donations, ten was travel training, so you could say thirty. Uh, we're cutting that down to ten and ten, or a total of twenty. So, it's-
Okay, okay, so there's a big reduction in that, that's good.
It's a big reduction of a third.
Okay. Um, the three percent too, I know a number of council members, um, choose not to take the raise. I know it's an auto raise, but then we turn around and we give it back. Um, so this three percent actually could, at the end of the day, be less.
Uh, yes, uh, council has, historically, council members at different times have given what we call give backs, a reduction to allowances, uh, for vehicle and cellphone. Um, yes, the wages are built into a resolution, so it is a increase based on CPI, Western Urban CPI as of December. It takes place in July.
Okay, and you'll give us that, the form to, to give that back?
Yes.
And I know, I know each council member's, um, it's an individual, you know, choice. I certainly made the commitment to, to never take that increase. I will continue to give that back. Um, so, but that, I just wanted to point out that that three percent could, it likely gonna be less. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you. And amongst the things that are in this budget are subscriptions or, or memberships in different organizations. Have you, have you got a breakdown of the organizations that come out of the city council fund that we contribute to, that are built into the budget?
Yes, we do. Uh, memberships for city council include League of Cities at forty thousand, EDON at one hundred thousand, and US Conference of Mayors at twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two. Those are the three memberships that, uh, council pays for. That comes out of this council.
Could, could you say the numbers again? Forty, a hundred?
Uh, Nevada League of Cities is forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
EDON is one hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then, US Conference of Mayors is twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. A total of a hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, there are other initiatives and other items paid for out of services and supplies, but those are the memberships.
Oh, I, I said this several times, and I think we need to look at our partnerships. And there was a time that I didn't believe the League of Cities was a good partnership. I think our, our member of the League of Cities has gone a long ways to, uh, to bringing them to where they're actually benefiting the big cities. Uh, I think that the League of Cities, for a long time, uh, carried the water for the small cities instead of the big ones. And I, I truly appreciate the work that Councilman Bobzien's done to bring in that organization more in the line of benefiting, uh, the larger organization, or larger cities in the state. And the League of Mayors is also a great benefit to the, uh, to moving forward our city. But I question the benefit of our contribution to EDON, um, an organization that, uh, has become very overtly political, and, uh, often is doing things that are contrary to the best interest of the city. And, uh, I, and I, I think that giving, uh, a major contribution to somebody to be a member of that organization and have that organization spend a lot of time working against our, our, uh, our issues, I think that we need to reconsider whether a hundred thousand dollars is, is appropriate for that organization, um, if membership at all is appropriate to that organization. So, um, I'm not sure what the memberships break down on that, but, um, we have partners out there that, uh, that are truly meeting some of our initiatives. Uh, for example, the, uh, tip volunteers that assist our police and firemen, that, uh, that need funding and are true benefit and, and help us to reach one of our, our three goals that we put forward at the beginning of the meeting. So, um, I would, uh, I would think that's an appropriate place to reapportion some of that money and, and, uh, and budget some money for them instead of for a, a membership that does us more damage than good sometimes.
Councilwoman Breckus?
Um, you know, Madam Mayor, I, um, I think, I think there's a place we should land on this. Uh, I started my career in the Office of Economic Development in a downturn market, and I know that there's people who show up from other parts of the country, doing site review, wanna look at sites. And if they're not going to an EDON, they're coming into our office and our, we've got a staff member out there every day, showing them land, introducing them to realtors, doing this sort of thing. I think EDON is filling an economic development strategy for us, whether or not, you know, how they're doing it is one way, but, um, you know, you can't say that they haven't had success, 'cause we've had a lot of relocations. So, I think that that hundred thousand dollars should be pared down to recognize what they're doing for us. But I hear from my small business districts, and I'm talking about Dickerson in particular, Wells, and Midtown, that there's some small business economic development efforts that aren't being met. I think that was stated thus by our downtown plan. So, I think that I would like to see if we do go into that hundred thousand dollars to have that dedicated towards a resource for our strategies to allow our small businesses to succeed, um, in some of these districts. And I'll just share a story, a very well-known, um, um, uh, Midtown business, um, Kraft told me, the, the proprietor there told me, uh, oh, over the holidays, I was able to do one thing, buy my building. A week later, another Midtown merchant, uh, with rents raising, uh, said, I'm closing down, my rents are going up, I cannot buy my business. We need an economic development strategy to help merchants succeed in these areas. And that's just the host. On Dickerson, um, I've been approached by, um, they're in that very difficult, um, railroad ownership scenario. Uh, the city was able to work with the railroad to buy all the property for retract. They left Dickerson behind. Now, Dickerson, which is a thriving business district, is suffering because the, and needs some economic development assistance from the city. So, if we go, cut into that hundred thousand dollars, um, you know, I, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to see some of it dedicated towards advancing our economic development strategies that I'm hearing from our constituents, and I'm also thinking that our master plan is directing us toward. Um, so maybe we could put that as a side issue to address or have a conversation here. I'd also like to ask one of my colleagues to champion a more uniform salary mechanism for the council. I've brought it up over the years, I haven't gotten anywhere, but, um, I, um, you know, would like for us, rather than to move, to move off the give backs, frankly, but move to a more sustainable way where we contemplate the salaries, they're uniform across our body, um, at the end of the year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think you make some good points about, um, economic development, Councilwoman Breckus. I also wanna say, um, I work closely with EDON. Matter of fact, yesterday, um, I spent all day with them in Orange County, uh, pitching to outdoor retailer. And, um, I was incredibly impressed with a lot of our partners, um, certainly EDON did a fantastic job, the airport, the RSCVA. Um, so you need to understand how sort of each one of those entities plays a pretty critical role. Um, so, I, so I think, you know, the next step, I, I think we should have EDON come and give a presentation. It would probably be good to see, um, you know, the benefits that they believe they give to the city. And I gotta tell you, um, I work with them quite a bit, um, on a lot of big companies and small companies, um, you know, from Midtown to Fortune 500 companies. So, um, you know, sometimes, uh, people might have a difference of opinion, but I think that they provide, um, some economic development guidance. And they deal with a lot of, um, issues before we even get to them, quite frankly. That's what, what I've noticed. They end up having to deal with some of the issues that companies have before they even get to council. So, it's kind of like, in a way, I look at them as like a nab, in a sense, right? Those companies are, are going to them before they get, get to us. So, um, I do think there's benefit there, and I think it'd be beneficial for them to come and give a presentation.
Councilwoman Dar, or Vice Mayor Dar.
Thank you very much. Um, I think it's beneficial too. We haven't had a presentation from them in quite some time. And if we want to, um, you know, deliver a message to them that we'd like them maybe to do something different or more, or in replace of, I think it's, it's mutually, uh, the right thing to do and respectful of the organization to, as a body, have that, um, discussion with them. Um, I, I too think that they do a lot more than maybe all of us are fully aware of. Um, I, I don't agree that, um, a blanket statement that they harm us, I think that's a reckless statement to make. Um, whether or not our hundred thousand dollars is the right amount, um, or, I, I don't know. I think it's, uh, for them being a partner in economic development in our community, um, it's the right thing to do to have them come and have a, uh, discussion with this body and, um, let that, you know, go where it goes.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Bobzien.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I've got a, just a couple of comments on this topic. Um, first is, uh, in, in appreciation for Councilman McKenzie's recognition of my, my work on League of Cities. Uh, that is an example of just sort of a long, slow process that, uh, takes constant engagement and, you know, looking for the next opportunities. And I think it's important to remember for, uh, the EDON relationship, that we have a similar liaison relationship with, um, one of our members. And so, I think, uh, engaging Councilman Delgado, rather than just, I mean, I, I agree, it's high time we have another, uh, presentation from EDON, but I think we can also have sort of a more focused conversation, uh, through our liaison to talk about, you know, what are our unmet needs and what are the things that perhaps we can improve in our relationship with EDON. I think the other piece of the, the, the block-by-block, um, uh, economic development, uh, effort, uh, is something that has come up time and time again. It's not really in EDON's wheelhouse. It is something that came out, uh, in the ULI report. We heard, uh, pieces of it again, echoes in, in, in the downtown plan. Uh, and I see, uh, that, uh, need being met, uh, through the downtown maintenance, uh, organization. Now, certainly, as we're talking about borders and we're talking about Midtown, I, I realize there's not a clean overlap there. But if you think of, uh, the model that, uh, so many in the community are looking to, uh, as we are standing up our, our bid, our downtown maintenance, our downtown management organization, the Sacramento model, uh, I think definitely applies. I mean, they have a twenty-year history, so they're way down the road from us. I see our phase one for, uh, the DMO really being sort of the, the clean downtown environment piece with, uh, the navigators and the ambassadors, and also just the, the maintenance. But sort of phase two can be what Sacramento's had experience with, where they have a point person that does that kind of block-by-block, uh, business-by-business, uh, interaction and work. Uh, so retention of existing businesses that have made investments in our downtown, uh, trying to cite, uh, new businesses into, you know, vacant spaces, that sort of thing. So, you know, kinda getting beyond this current budget cycle, but I think it's important to kind of have a, sort of a five-year working view of where we're going on these different, uh, issues.
Did you wanna say something?
Just maybe to, um, encapsulate what we've heard here. So, next steps and moving forward. Um, it sounds like where the council's at is that at the next workshop, we'd like a presentation from EDON, and that on the table are two discussions about either moving the funds to another purpose or reducing the funds to be able to add a different, different program.
EDON has been here in the last three months with their dashboard. I mean, I think it was probably in the last, I mean, we can easily look, but they've been here very recently. And so, I, I don't want to hear that again. I, I'd like to hear, I'd like, I, I mean, I mean, if we don't wanna embark upon an economic development initiative outside of, you know, what they do or what we're gearing up on the downtown to address other elements, that's fine. We wanna put the money into somewhere else, that's fine. I don't really want to have an organization come and do a selling job. I think we, I, one thing I do credit them quite a bit on is their dashboard and sharing their minutes with us. So, I'd like, I just, I just don't wanna see that next meeting gummed up with them doing their presentation.
And I, I would agree that they've been here very recently. In fact, most recently that they were here was when they came to attack us about us not doing our job. And not feeling, not feeling the need for the, for the low-income workers that they're bringing to the community. So, um-
Listen.
I would, I would agree that they, they've been here very recently, and, and that recent, uh, presentation was nothing more than, uh, an assault on this council for not feeling a need for a workforce that they're bringing to the community. They can't afford the housing, uh, that's on the market for them. So, um, those are the two things that I feel that they've become very political about and that has created, uh, the discussion we need to have about whether they're a partner that's beneficial to us. If they're gonna bring jobs to the community, they need to bring jobs to the community that can afford to live in our community, uh, rather than ones that come in and, and the jobs are ones that need assistance to, uh, to maintain a household. And, and that's the issues I have with what EDON has done. While taking tax revenue away from, uh, local governments, they're bringing in jobs that can't, uh, that we have to make a special, special housing model for.
Vice Mayor Dar.
Thank you very much. Um, it's my understanding that when I, I believe Mr. Kazmierski gave his presentation at Directions, um, did any council members go to that? No. So, that's the presentation I think is worthwhile as a partner with us. Rather than to throw stones, let's have a conversation with a partner and, and have a face-to-face conversation about things that we'd like to see different or modified or augmented or reduced or whatever that may be. I think it's, um, disingenuous to sit up here and cast stones at someone when they're not here to have a, a candid conversation with us. I don't think that's appropriate to do that.
I think it's always important to have, um, these conversations at the table, or otherwise, this sort of seems to manifest. And I don't think that that's going to serve any of us well. So, um, so I would like to request a presentation. Would you, uh, I guess maybe I would ask the attorney, would, is that something you'd like to us to make a motion on?
No, that, that's not agendaized. I think we should stay on the, on the budget right now and-
Okay.
We can talk about that later.
Okay, so, we're, let's go right ahead. Mr. Bill Thomas.
I guess th, this is a good point for a, a question, both of the city attorney and the council is, um, we're really looking for, because we have a, a hard deadline to finish this budget, um, next steps in, in terms of what you would like us to do as budget staff, as the city manager, to help resolve issues that are- to help resolve issues that are left unresolved here. So that was my suggestion, hearing the three different approaches to this, that perhaps the presentation, fully making EDON aware of what the questions are, the concerns are, seemed to be a consensus way to move this forward as opposed to a vote to decide which one of the three we were going to take as an option, so. But again, it's, there's probably going to be a few of these as we go through this, and it's really up to the council to decide how you want to give us that direction. We would certainly like clarity, but sometimes we know there's not going to be clarity. But however our process works from here, it's going to be important to give us at least some direction. Thank you.
The other, I think, piece to this is that Councilman Delgado is not here, and he is their liaison, and I do think it's important that he has the opportunity to weigh in on this, since he does have a seat at their table, so. So I would say, I think it would be very beneficial to see their presentation from directions. Right? Okay.
The other thing Robert Chisel again would like to add is that before we pay EDON, it would require coming back to council with the contract for fiscal year 18. So before we make any payment, a new contract agreement has to come back and be approved by council for that amount. And the only reason I say that is there may not be an opportunity, depending on their timing, to get them in here by next week to do a presentation, but.
All right, thank you. And I'm just going to touch on conference of mayors really quickly. For many years in the past, we did not belong to this organization. I will tell you, it's extremely beneficial now more than ever because mayors across the country are joining in Washington over huge issues that affect cities such as CDBG and things like that. And the stronger our voices as a city, the better off we are. So I appreciate the council in supporting that.
On this item, I would like to see a way to restore the council donations to 70,000, even if other things come out. I know there's some things in there, like Councilmember Bobzine is an advocate for the SESC, and that's 7,500. I think Madam Mayor is an advocate for helping with some airport stuff, that's 10,000. Mr. Delga, Mr. McKenzie has been talking quite a bit about the tip. You know, maybe some of those little buckets can build back into our discretion, so we can have a larger donation pool on our own, you know, something like that. That's just a comment. But my bigger comment on this budget area is that the arts and culture budget resides in here, correct, Mr. Chisel?
Well, the, there is a room tax portion of it, and then you get to it. It's not part of this, but it will be part, there's a council portion of the room tax.
Okay, so, so the council budget is actually more than this 1.4?
Correct.
Okay, so room tax is the time to talk about it. Okay. When I read the counts payable, that all, all that comes out of the council budget, that's why sometimes it's a little ambiguous for me.
This is general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Breckus, just, I'm not aware of any $10,000 that goes to the airport, so I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, so that I'm not aware of. However, I agree with you in the sense, adding that back in to the budget, and I'll tell you why. I do have concerns, though, when we all give donations to nonprofits, and many of them are so incredibly well-deserving. That is like not the issue at all. But my fear is, because what I see is that then others get left out, and then, then I feel like they look at the city as if we are sliding them, and I don't, I don't think that that's a good message. So maybe, in that retrospect, we do something like, you know, really large community cleanup, something that benefits the entire city. So I just want to reiterate that, that my concern is, when we look at all these nonprofits, and again, they're all so deserving, I wish we had gazillions of dollars to give to all of them, because they're so, so worthy. But my fear is, is there just isn't enough to go around, and I think that could send a very concerning message.
You know, thank you for bringing that up, Madam Mayor. I have, over the last two years, in very limited manner, almost, you know, not at all, given any of my donation funds to nonprofits, unless they're doing something for a city department, like Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, which is a fiscal agent for parks and all so on. So I pulled away from that, and in fact, watching the county commission, when they have their discretionary funds, they must have some guideline, because all of their discretionary funds from the commissioners go to departments to do initiatives. And, well, I don't know. And so my question is, maybe we could ask our staff to tell us if there's guidelines on discretionary funds over at the council. I've done that.
Or maybe some way to make those funds stretch so much further, right?
Yeah, so.
Instead of incrementally go to funding here and there, right?
Sure, to the HRC to do this, to the arts and culture. I concur with Madam Mayor, but I think there's a way to meet some of these other nonprofit needs, and someone put it on an L item, that we set up a committee for community development block grants, and we can fund nonprofits with that. And, and we have talked about that in the past. And so Mr. McKenzie was very passionate about the tip the other day, which to me seems like it could be a vendor to the police department and the services. So I think there's a way to fund the nonprofits through other budget departments or the CDBG, and maybe put some parameters on us on those contributions, because I do think that's a, I think you're right, you know, about the, you know, why this girl's trip to Scandinavia, not that boy's trip to Costa Rica, you know, for his educational purpose.
I don't want people to think that we are not being fair, and it's so hard to pick and choose, right? So, anyway, go ahead. Mr. City Manager.
It's going to be a long day, but an important day. So the direction I hear is that we would reinstate the council donations and look at a process or guidelines for those discretionary funds when we return on the 9th. The second part of that, which is the guidelines, may take us a little longer than that, but at least we can look at budgetarily what the consequence of adding council donations back to where they were. Is that, is that a consensus?
Sounds good. I think we would all agree. All right, thank you.
And Robert Chisel, again, just to point out, we do have $10,000 in there that is paid also to EDON, to the airport authority for flight, air service.
For what?
Expanded air service, which was approved by council.
I think, is that what you're referring to, Councilwoman? Because I think.
Must be.
I don't quite understand exactly what that would be for. Is this RASK, or is it, what is it?
How about if we bring that information back, so you know what the decision is, by giving you specifics on where it goes and how it benefits the community? Fair enough?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Moving on to city manager's office, this is the city manager's office, there's 31.75 full-time equivalents. The ones in blue are actually in the department, just to give you a view of who is reporting to the manager, those are the ones in white. What you see is, again, the same, similar kind of increases for salaries and benefits. Services and supplies have decreased. Point out that we've made some changes, the manager is making changes to how the office is managed, including the strategy and policy is being combined into admin. Last year it was broken out. We are removing the strategic initiatives manager, that position is going to be eliminated. One recreation coordinator from parks to special events. We're going to reclass two positions to two lower levels, that's in the OCCE area. Risk premiums reinstated as we see throughout. There's $39,000 additional for the downtown maintenance organization consultant. There was some one-time funding that was removed, and some software costs that moved to IT. The intent with all these, when we have software, is to put them in IT, so they're in one bucket and they can be managed and reviewed properly as we go forward. And then, as you said earlier, salary adjustments as required, group insurance increase because of the health insurance.
All right, just I'll comment at this time.
Go right ahead. All right, so when we went over, went over this with Bill Thomas previously, and what I was informed of was that he was recommending that the manager of OCCC, OCCE be downgraded in some way to not be a manager.
It's a vacant position currently.
Yeah.
From a director to a manager.
Yeah, and he, I thought rightly said that that's a call for the new city manager, I mean, because that's a reorganization of the city manager's world. And in my world, that's a very critical position to have at the, you know, working directly with the manager. So my recommendation would be to not do that, especially to not bake it into the budget, where then it's very hard to undo it. Now, I think that the manager said, well, we have this position, strategic initiatives manager, and they can do whatever they want with it. But I guess what that means is you've added another position, like if they did decide to take that position and make it the director of OCCE, that you've now added another position. I mean, they'll do whatever they're going to do, they'll figure it out, but I just, I just wanted to advocate that. I think it's very important to have a person at that level, from my perspective. Thank you.
Go right ahead. City Manager, Bill Thomas.
So this kind of gets to our earlier conversation. The strategy here was that there were three positions. One of them was eliminated, one of them was retained, and the one that was retained was the highest salaried one, so it gave the new manager the most flexibility. Certainly, in terms of programmatically explaining this, we could put back in the director of OCCE, which would simply mean more money would go, or you could give direction that you would prefer the manager get rid of the highest-funded position. Our strategy was simply to get, you know, give her the most flexibility by having the most resources to do what she felt needed to be done, based on conversations with the council and her belief of where the organization needs to go. I would not disagree with you that communications is probably going to be a high priority for her, but it was really intended to give her the most flexibility.
And I'm, of course, I'm not saying make a change now, I'm just highlighting it for the rest of the council to know where I'm coming from, and that, you know, I think it's going to be an important thing for her to figure out.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and while, while this budget, by their schematic, appears to be flat, in the breakdown in the budget book, in the administration, we saw almost $600,000 more spent this year in administration than was budgeted, and we're continuing to budget that, budget that $600,000. And I just, how did we get that far above what was budgeted in administration last, last year, and why are we continuing to hold it there? The movement of the Office of Strategy and Policy, they, we budgeted 789,000 in there last year. We only spent 237,000 of it, and we're going to roll that 237,000 into the administration this year, and, but there's still a $6,000, $100,000 that, I mean, where did that extra spending come in, in the city manager's office, and where are we going to continue to make that, that above what we budgeted last year?
Mr. City Manager, Bill Thomas.
The, let me give you the overall change, and then Robert can explain the numbers. As I interpret what the direction that was given is, there would be a position, and for lack of a better way to explain it, a position and a half less FTEs in the manager's budget with this recommendation. However, the 600,000, I'm sure they're looking into, there were some pretty substantial one-time costs, which I believe were charged back to the manager's department based on some salaries that needed to be paid.
And if those were one-time costs, why are we carrying them forward into this budget year?
And I'll look to finance to explain that.
If, looking at administration, we'll have to get back to you on the details as to why that changed, and at the next, at later date, so I apologize.
So I have captured that as a item that we're definitely going to drill into for the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just echo, I've been concerned about the growth in the city manager's office, and I think I've mentioned that at each budget time, but it's really just something that's, we, you know, the timing here is really odd, so maybe it's just something to talk to her when she comes on.
I'm kind of going back to what Councilwoman Doer said. I think people need to understand that the OCCE is the talking piece or the mouthpiece of the city. It's a very, very important department, and matter of fact, I'd like to know how much of you guys rely on them or use them, or, I mean, I'm, I'm in communications with them three or four times a day, and look at council highlights and pre-lights, and one of the reasons the NABs are successful is because, and state of the city and the engagement in the city is truly from the OCC office, and not to mention, you know, it's been cut back. So I want to make sure this council does understand the importance of that. It's like when you have a business and you don't have a marketing or branding department, can you imagine what that does? I mean, how would you know about any communications that come out of the city without that department? So I want to, I do want to stress that. That's something that, I can't imagine if I cut off my marketing and branding in my business, it would probably be non-existent. But they also provide a very important process to all of us, so, in many different levels. So I think, you know, I'd ask this council to be aware of the magnitude of which the department works pretty hard.
Right, and they work hard, and I think that it's even more to the point of the management or leadership of that. So I don't think that we're actually.
The manager comes in, she can take a look at the mix of people and have a conversation, but that would be the policy direction, from what you're saying, that I would take as the acting manager.
And I wouldn't take away the other position, I mean.
Right, I wouldn't either, but I would agree.
But I'm talking, it's additive, and we'll come back and tell you what the consequence of all these.
Because then I feel like it downgrades that department, and many of people may not understand truly how.
Yeah, yeah.
How that department is really critical to what we do and how we interact with our citizens, and how they are constantly messaging to the city. Otherwise, this, you wouldn't know what was going on, truthfully. So I want to make sure that, and we can certainly have that conversation, too, with Sabra, and I believe that that's important, you know. And it's a little, I got to tell you, it's a little difficult not having her here, and I know the timing is kind of a little off and strange and all of that, so, you know, unfortunately, those are conversations we have not had yet, and kind of seeing her direction, too, I think would be helpful to the council.
Will she be here before the next one?
Yeah, she comes in next Monday, so.
Monday. I think, I think we can leave it how it's baked, because if we want to upgrade that thing, then we have to take away somewhere else. She's got 1% to leave, she's got vacancies, I think she'll be fine. And my comments about the growth of the city manager's office, it is a concern for me, as I said, but I think Ms. Doer mentioned a couple budget settings ago, is sometimes the manager's office is a place where you incubate initiatives, and then they, they move on. I mean, communications is important, but sometimes it's not necessarily an arm of the city manager's office.
Well, I agree with that.
And just like the neighborhood advisory board, that, that may be, you know, somewhere that is in a, you know, she may do a broader reorganization of departments. And Madam Mayor, I invite you to one of the Ward 1 Neighborhood Advisory Board's meetings this summer also.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I would love that.
Because I'm going to have to miss one, and I remember we, I remember we said we'd have some subbing in, and I don't think I've had a, I don't, I think a request has gone in once to Mr. Bobzine to sub in, but I'll ask Madam Mayor to sub in.
I'd love to, since I live in that ward and I interact with them where I live all the time, so you let me know when you're missing and I'll fill in for you. Love to do it. Okay.
I'd just like to answer Councilmember McKenzie's question. I apologize, kind of a real dull moment there. The Office of Strategy and Policy was combined into the admin department, sub-department, so that's why you see in that number increasing, if you go to the line below, it is actually going away. So that's why admin increased so much this year. I apologize for not catching that.
All right, go right ahead, Mr. City Manager, Bill Thomas.
Okay, so I just need clarity again, because the last comment was different from the solution, is the direction from council to look at a budget that.
Confirm that, confirm that.
Is the same as recommended, or to add in the director? Now, remember, you will still have time to look at this, because it is true that in order to add, something's going to be taken away. because it is true that in order to add, something's gonna be taken away.
But you have that $600,000 that was carried over, uh, in the special pays, that maybe you can use some of that to get it back to $30,000, or whatever it needs to go back to the director.
Councilman Bobzine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this just strikes me as something that the new city manager starts next week. Let's get her thoughts on it. I don't know.
All right. Go right ahead.
I kind of agree with that too. I think there's, you know, some struggling with, um, with this, um, I think there is great importance with our communications division. Otherwise, we let somebody else tell our story. And there was a time when I think someone was advocating for an internal reporter. Um, so I, I would like to hear from the city manager, new city manager on this.
All right, so I think that's direction? You got it? Okay, great. All right, go right ahead, Mr. Chisel.
Moving on to civil service. Uh, civil service, uh, has three FTEs. Uh, they report to the Civil Service Commission, but are funded out of the general fund. Uh, again, um, group insurance increase, risk premium increase. And then what you'll see is there was an increase in the, uh, one of the positions was reclassified from a management analyst to a senior management analyst, uh, which drove some of the salary and benefit costs. Any questions on that one?
Go right ahead.
Yep.
Councilmember McKenzie.
This board is really unique, because we actually, or this department's really unique, because we have a, a board that has the ability to set the chief examiner's wages. And while they, during the action at their last meeting, they followed the, what the budget recommendations were. Um, they're looking to come back and adjust that. And this is, the unique position of this is that our charter says that we have to fund them. But the question is, if they come back and they give a radical increase to the examiner, do we have to adjust their budget to accept that? And, um, I think that we need to look real seriously at taking a position that we've given you a budget. If you're gonna do that increase, you need to figure out how to do it within that budget. We're not gonna come back and adjust the budget for a radical increase in salary for somebody within that department. They could have timed that in advance of the budget process so that our budget people had an opportunity to work with what they were proposing for a wage increase there. Um, but they chose not to. And so I'm, I, uh, I was a little, um, a little frustrated at our last meeting when they were considering a radical increase to salary, after they gave a substantial increase last year in the same process. And we had to do some finagling in the budget to adj, to address that increase. So, um, I, I, we've gotta be able to have a budget that we can live with. And, and the departments need to understand that they have to live with the budget they get. That they, and that particular board, the Civil Service Commission, um, has some unique abilities under our charter. And somewhere or another, they've gotta realize that they've got a budget, and they, and they need to live with that budget.
You know, that's a, that's a good point. And also, they can look to guidance from us on our salary resolution that we do for the unrepresented, right? Do, do you, do you bake in a budget salary for the unrepresented like we do on the civil service budget, like you bake in the same one for our unrepresented here?
Um, we baked in a slight number for unrepresented, but it is up to the manager to make the decision as to-
Okay.
What, if any, adjustment. Now, I would say if there is an adjustment to the nonrepresented salary scales, it has, it is set by resolution. So, uh, for instance, uh, the nonrepresented, if you're in Office Administrator 2, it's that there's a resolution that gets a high and low. Uh, same thing with the mid-management, uh, sector and the management sector. So like department heads, their salary is set by resolution. Manager can set the salary within that range. But to change that range would require a change of resolution that should come to council.
Councilmember McKenzie.
The, the, the problem we see here is that the way that the charter reads is that the commission has the ability to set the examiner's salary.
I get, I understand that, I guess-
And, and they can, I mean, the, the, I don't disagree with their ability to set that, but they can't blow a budget up by setting it. It, it, they've got a budget that they, if we accept a budget for them, they need to live within that budget. If they make a decision to raise his salary, and that eliminates a position, another position in, within that department, then that's a decision that they've made. They can't, we can't allow them to hold us hostage and say, "We're gonna raise his salary, and you've gotta give us more money."
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just think we have a very prudent practice, which actually I identified in the Tumwa budget, they don't have, they're not as transparent about it. But on the unrepresented, we pass a side resolution. And to me, how that is treated is guidance to all these autonomous and independent authorities, the city attorney, the courts, and the, um, and the civil service. And so, when do we pass that resolution, or is it?
The, for the nonrepresented, uh, that was for eight, nine years.
So they're just on the steps.
Some direction, obviously. This may be something that's repeated because of the change in leadership, that, um, the objective of working under the budget given to each department or each function is certainly the way that I would suggest the council proceed, because that is your discretion to allocate money to different functions. So if civil service function you determine has X amount of dollars to provide the service, then I would interpret that to mean that if the Civil Service Commission does something different, then they would have to find the resources in their budget. It wouldn't necessarily come from another city department, because that would be contrary to the funding decision the council made.
Yep, there. All right.
All right.
We agree.
Moving on to community development. Uh, what you'll see here, the little green, uh, positions are the new proposed positions that are proposed in the budget, to give you an idea of, uh, who they are.
Thank you for doing that. Well, I asked for it.
Um, community development, uh, again, we're adding that code enforcement officer for the motel inspection program, uh, to be funded with the increase in parking meter fees. What we're proposing in this budget is increasing the parking meter fees from a dollar an hour to a dollar fifty an hour, uh, stated, et cetera. Uh, we are also adding $11,000 to business license for the Acela Financial Statement Interface, additional overtime for Acela implementation, um, adding $50,000 to IT for Acela seats. Uh, those are the licenses for utilizing the Acela system, not seats, they're licensing. Uh, add $30,000 to planning for master plan noticing, and adding $46,500 to planning for the regional plan update, uh, TMRPA. Uh, so you'll see that, uh, those changes there within the budget.
Go right ahead.
If I may, just for clarity, the additional money for regional planning is actually for the regional plan updates, so it would be one-time. That's not expanding their budget. That was, as I understand it, for those of you that were in that conversation, to hire a consultant to help that agency get the plan done.
Okay. I'd like to talk about, did you wanna talk?
Go right ahead.
Sorry. I'd like to talk about the motel, um, code enforcement program. Um, I, obviously, it's a new program. We don't have any parameters. We're putting resources. Um, I've always been taught that when you wanna do a new program, you design the program, and you have clear understandings of what the, that is. And that's where I would be at a comfortable level to then commit not only one, but two positions to this initiative. And I have here our current list of L items, and there's 54 of those. 11 of those, not including downtown operation, but I incl, I think downtown operation would probably be included, are related to housing. I think the motel program, obviously, is related to housing. I'm not entirely sure, because I don't know the parameters of this motel inspection program, although I do see it as more or less one of these L items, that that's enough to keep someone going. I don't know how many motels we have. I don't know how many are gonna be, um, you know, used as residence. There's that extra thing related to the lodgers tax that we've talked about. Um, I think that this housing czar, and I'm gonna stop using that term, um, the housing, the high-level housing policy person is, is really our higher need, to then design a program for this motel effort, and then see about where we put the resources. Because, um, the, uh, code enforcement officer, which is, is really an entry level, very specialty, is not gonna work on housing linkage policies, property options for housing, infill traffic study requirements, policy incentivizing revitalization, short-term affordable housing actions. He's not gonna do any of that stuff. And I, I met with, um, one of our superheroes, Monica, a couple of weeks ago. And she's been advocating, I thought it was my idea, I think it was really her idea. Uh, she wrote a letter to us last fall, I think she resented to us, for a housing, high-level housing position. I would ask the council to, in this CD department, to place the housing person. I think they can also make our CDBG efforts go a little smoother, um, on a housing-related. And task the manager to come up with that position that's rather high-level, um, division head, almost level. Um, maybe a third of it can come out of building enterprise, because we know the building, and our, the building function is, is key in that, and we're ready to do a building inspector out of that for it. And then mid-year, and then when the program's designed, then we have clarity of where and what this motel interdiction program's gonna be doing. You know, when you have codes and code enforcement officers, and they don't have good codes, then you also are in a problem too. And I'll, I'll note that we're spending $150,000 to redo our zoning code also. And I also wanna call to attention, um, some of those surplus funds we're sitting by. I think we've got about $250,000 of surplus funds that are sitting around to help with that neighborhood grant program. That money's been sitting around for two years, and we don't have program design for that either. So I think we have some higher-level policy work to do to achieve our goals, rather than tacking in right to a, a worker be very narrow, um, staffing for this code effort. That's my piece.
All right, thank you. Do, did anyone like to weigh in?
I guess I would.
Go, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, earlier, when we talked about the organization chart, and I mentioned some changes that were made over, over the years. So two years ago, uh, I supported an assistant direct, department director for this position, for, for this department. And the idea, my understanding of how it was sold to us, was- And the idea, my understanding of how it was sold to us, was
All right, Madam Clerk. Let's resume our meeting, and I think we're starting back with, what, Parks and Rec?
Yes, we are. Robert Chizel, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record. We are now on Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. As you see, there is the proposed addition of a senior irrigation system tech in the budget. That's that green position, along with the other blues. Again, the same thing we've been saying about the wages and benefits, group insurance increase, risk premium reinstated to 2016 levels, and added the $2,148 for tree mapping software. I would point out there are some changes that are taking place in this budget that are coming through room tax, but from the general fund, this is the only changes that are being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chizel. Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I would just ask council to jump in.
Okay. Okay, so it is a 5% increase, and that's what, if you recall, going back as far back as November, our Parks Commission had requested that we increase our budget by 5%. But I think they were talking more on the capital, so we'll get to that next.
Capital will be later on in the agenda.
Okay.
And yes, we, in addition to room tax, which some room tax will be used for capital.
Okay, so the capital outlay, though, part of this budget is going up 40,000, and that's for those items that you discussed. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm just thinking about this for a minute. I know this is all we can probably afford. And I guess I would just make a comment that I think we've all heard from our community, how much they want our parks to be better, maintenance. Virginia Lake, I could come up with half a million dollars of just fixing the concrete and the asphalt. What were you going to say?
I was going to say I could come up with a lot more.
But I'm just saying, even just the most cosmetic of things. And plus tons of other parks, you know, that need attention. I just wanted to say I wish that we could do more. And I guess I will also make a pitch that if it does come in, that the revenues are looking different, you know, within a few months, I think this is an area perhaps we could think about addressing. I'll just say that.
I'd like to just say that, you know, our Parks budget at the height was about 18 or 19 million. And it's just, it's just not doing the job for us as a community that values its quality of life and its amenities. And yesterday at the meeting about the airport and the school, I am starting to see signs that Washoe County is starting to realize that they're not doing the job other, also. And I think they're starting to think about some investments, and I think that we need to work and think about collaborating with them as best we can. So that's, it'll be something I'll be bringing up to our new manager and at the Parks Commission. And I think that's fortunate because they have more resources than we do to play around with.
Well, and just a comment on that, I thought it was interesting that people kept saying the golf course wasn't paying for itself. But then I started thinking, well, nothing in recreation pays for itself. I mean, a baseball field doesn't pay for itself, a soccer, we don't charge fees to play, you know, $20 every night of soccer. You know, we don't charge, you know, to use our other facilities. You know, if you rent a room, and obviously for a wedding or something, you know, or a shelter, we charge. But we don't charge to use our other fields. And I just thought it was a little bit of a false dynamic or a conversation where it's expected to carry itself, whereas other recreational opportunities aren't. So that's just one thought. And the other thought that struck me in discussing the school was just I wondered what kind of amazing partnership we could build, whether, you know, assuming, which some of the news outlets reported that we had approved a school site, which did not happen. We approved moving forward with a conceptual plan and investigating a school site. But let's just say it does move forward. They had laid out a number of recreational facilities there that could be co-located, whether it was nine holes of golf, swimming pool, other fields. And I just wondered what kind of partnerships we could be building there. And, you know, so it's a challenge to all of our park staff that are sitting in the back row there, you know, to be aware of, and you weren't there, I don't think, Andy. But there's a, you might want to review the tape because there's a lot of conversation about facilities, you know, recreational facilities, including an aquatic, a very large aquatic 50-meter facility to be built there.
And just to get on a little soapbox, I would point out as a Reno resident, we all pay the same Washoe County taxes as an unincorporated Washoe County resident, whether it's through sales tax or through property tax. So we pay the same level of taxes to the county as anyone else in this Washoe County.
So, and your next point is?
My next point is we do not receive those services back from Washoe County. They provide them only to unincorporated residents.
Which I guess their argument would be, well, we're welcome to use this north, south, Bartley, whatever. But
There's room for an audit into the streets fund. Because the streets fund that they get from the fuel tax, which predates to the 2008 indexing, I don't care what anyone says it does, is spent in unincorporated Washoe County. It's not blended out in the cities. So as we queue up audit investigations, we should, you know, put that on there.
But anyway, since they were at the table, this is just to take it one more step. It sounded like Washoe County might get, I'm going to put it in, I don't think I want to say that. Anyway, a sum, I'll just put it that way, a sum of money from the school district, rather than giving the land to the school district, they might get a sum of money. And there was discussion of reinvesting it in golf, but I also thought they could reinvest it in other recreational facilities on the site. I didn't see why not.
And as you've seen throughout, the group insurance, the risk premium reinstated, and salary adjustments as required based on their grade and step.
Could you get into Mr. McKenzie's point from early this morning about?
About the over-hires?
Yeah, the Stark
Yeah, because last year, here's how I understand it. It's last year we were very excited because we were going to build in over-hires. So the chief could start an academy with loading up what he anticipated was going out on the back end with retirement, so he'd be ahead of the game. But we didn't add any positions. Now it appears to me, and I think this is what Mr. McKenzie's saying, is that we're adding positions, but that process we thought we established last year is going away. Is that correct?
That is what is being proposed in the budget. And just to give you an understanding, yes, right now we have 317 sworn, and I'm looking over at the chief, I think it's 323 with the over-hires are actually sworn right now.
Oh.
And yes, every month, based on retirement, we lose 1.2 individuals. I know you don't lose .2, but on average, you're losing somebody every month. And so they have to the academy, and I'll let the chief talk.
So Reno Police Chief Jason Soto. So the challenge is, and I'll give you a specific example. We had an officer who just recently reached out to, we try and get them to predict when they're going to retire, and they're actually pretty good about doing that. Recently, we had somebody who's going to be retiring in mid-July, which is after the academy date. Without the over-hires, I can't anticipate that position. So once that position is actually open in July, I cannot put somebody into that spot until the next academy, which is six months there. And then they go through the academy for all their training, and then they hit the street, and you're talking up to 66 weeks before they're a sworn police officer that we can use fully within our jurisdiction. So it's very challenging to try and predict who's going to retire when, and whether or not people are going to fail out of the academy. So with the over-hire, it's incumbent upon myself to be responsible for those positions, which I have been. You don't abuse those positions, but as it stands now with this budget, the challenge is they're giving us six positions, five, in this proposed budget, five officers, one sergeant. And that will be on January 1st. From July 1, when this goes, there'll be a six-month gap. So we're pretty much back where we started.
Okay, but I guess the point is, this last year, we had a policy where that person told you he's leaving July 1, and say the academy started June, the over-hire would allow you to put that slot in that year.
That's correct.
Now this budget is not doing that, is that correct?
That's correct.
But this budget is adding you six positions.
On January 1, yes.
On January 1. Is it kind of a wash? I mean, why don't we just not add the six positions and give you over-hire authority?
That's a good question.
Okay, so there's that. But then, in introducing these thoughts, Mr. Chizel said something that made me wonder. He said, "We've got 317 positions, but you have 323 on right now." Does that mean that the over-hire, we've got more on than we budgeted for?
Sort of. So we hire at maximum capacity, if we were fully staffed and we had nobody retire and nobody fail out of the academy, we would be at 323 positions.
Okay.
But for an example, just this last week, we had a recruit decide that this just wasn't for him.
Wasn't their deal?
So then you're down to 322. We've had a couple retirements, now you're down to 320. And we get back to the point where we're not effectively utilizing our police officers for those funded positions. So we're always down, there's cost savings there, but it's at the expense of this community.
So you have 317 right now?
Yes.
Even though you're authorized for 323?
Probably, I'd have to ask Bridget, but we're probably right around 317.
Oh, okay, so you're at full load. I mean, I guess my question is, what's the budgetary difference of giving you over-hire authority but not giving the six positions? Is it a wash?
I guess the budgetary oversight was if you gave me the six permanent positions as proposed in this budget, that would bring us up to 323.
Oh, that would bring you to 323, okay.
That would bring us to 323 funded positions. And then this council would have the authorization if they so chose in the future. I don't know, if I could find money somewhere in my budget, or you could find money in your budget to approve those over-hires so that we continue to, you know, we continue to grow with the community.
Okay, so right now we're increasing, we're going up, I don't know. Mr. Chizel, can you just go over the numbers of what we're at now and what these six officers are adding to the salary and wages? And break in anyone else?
Well, I just, the math is confusing. It's like moving it from here, putting it here, calling it something else.
Right.
I'm just not sure.
Can I try something here?
Yes, go right ahead.
So at the end of the day, what we're really talking about here is increasing the sworn force. We're going from 317 to 323, so it would be permanent carrying forward more officers in the appropriation for the police department. When we talk about the over-hires, what we're really talking about is the timing of spending the money. Because in theory, it should balance. In other words, a number of officers should match up with the people that are hired. What we're talking about is the ability for the chief, because he only does two academies a year, to be able to forecast, when he does the academy, what he might see at a point in time in the future. And I think that would be a direction that the manager would want to give to him to say, "Okay, I'm going to authorize you, Chief Soto, to go ahead and put in three more people, or whatever the number is, into the academy, knowing full well that at some point in the future, there's going to be people retiring." But at the end of the day, the strategy is to get to the 323 and try to maintain that. Now, you could pre-fund it and say that, you know, we're going to assume there is no accounting at the end of the day, which I guess there isn't if you never catch up. But we're really talking about adding sworn officers to the mix for our police department of 323. I would argue that the over-hire, even though technically it's allowing them to put people on the street, it's not adding officers. There's not more officers at some point in the future.
But maybe it's helping in a better way to get them trained and ready to roll. I just don't understand. I mean, what I think you're saying is if we add six and we keep them employed, then we have six more. But if anybody retires, you know, we're always dealing with vacancies. Every organization, you, Parks, everybody, is dealing with vacancies. That's a common, you usually have up to 20% vacancy any day, on vacation, on sick, on whatever, you know, disability, retirement.
Yeah, so to simplify it, we have 317 fully funded positions right now. Whether that number's 317 or it's bumped up to 323, we're still going to have attrition, no matter what. People are going to retire, they're not going to make we're still going to have attrition no matter what. People are gonna retire, they're not gonna make it through the program, and they're gonna decide that this isn't a career for them. The big question is, once we get to that final number, once we pare down that final number, which it looks like it's gonna be three hundred and twenty-three, it's gonna come back at some point in the future to say, we need some kind of flexibility to address that attrition when it arises. And that's my job, to say, hey, you know what? In two thousand and nineteen, we're gonna have a lot of retirements, and we're gonna have to find a way to address them. And the way to address them is gonna have to be some type of over hire permission from this council.
I mean, maybe, maybe an approach, I know we like to think of the police ads in teams, but I see that these two things force against each other and work in tandem, and we're in a flat budget scenario with revenue losing a loss productions essentially, as far as I'm seeing. Maybe it's, you know, three positions and over hire authority, you know, and then that gives more flexibility? I, I don't know. I, I see your concern in wanting to lose the flexibility of over hire. I see us wanting to just see the numbers go up, and I think everyone does, but maybe there's a balance there that can get you...
Or, or I could, I could offer another suggestion, and that is the six positions and then less over hire positions.
Or, I have another idea?
Well, that's how it is right now. It's the six.
It's the same way. It's, it's apples and oranges. It'll both achieve the same goal.
But Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so a different idea would be to fund the six positions, but to fund the over hires, which every time you have an over hire, I mean, you have vacancy savings. So you have vacancy savings. You're not exceeding your budget presumably. Take that from another fund, whether you wanna say it's the rainy day fund, it's a this fund, it's a that fund, that is standing by. We're, we're not gonna be losing money, because I assume that you have vacancy savings, because there's retirements, the people out, whatever. And I, I think it just keeps you fully staffed, you know, without having to go beyond your budget.
They budget the vac- vacancies.
Savings, but maybe they don't budget vacancies.
They do.
No, but maybe, my point is, is maybe we, you take your vacancy savings, which is probably on the order of ten to fifteen to twenty percent, I don't know what it is. And you, you have that money built in your budget by these six positions, right? And then you borrow the money from, whether it's the rainy day fund or whatever fund, and you keep this fund whole, so that you're fully staffed. That's what I'm saying. Just a different, it's, it's doing both. It's basically doing both. It's getting the new positions and funding the over hires temporarily from another source, because you have vacancy savings. So, it's just an idea.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think part of the chief's concern is that it costs the department money to move people into the training cycle. And then from the time that they get in the training cycle, it's twelve to eighteen months before they're, they, they're a sworn officer that can serve on the street by themselves. They're truly filling a vacancy. But, and so that's why he, he needs the over hire ability, so that he can have those people in the cycle. Whether he's got a projected vacancy there or not, he's got them in the cycle, because during that time period, vacancies occur regardless of whether it's people from a previous training cycle that don't finish, if it's a, a person retiring, or whatever may occur that creates that vacancy. And he needs the ability to, because we're doing a grand thing here, increasing the staffing levels at the police department. It's something the community's looking for, and that, and the department needs. But if we don't give him the tools to fill those vacancies and keep those vacancies full, which is what over-tire does, then we're not really increasing the, the force on, on the streets. On the, to the other point, though, that I have, I don't know, if you've got the number off the top of your head, or if you need to turn around and, and call on your calculator, how much, how many hundreds of dol-, or how many dollars did we spend last year above budget for, above the staffing level for over hire?
I did need my calculator. It's about six hundred thousand.
So those six positions through the year, their training and everything, all the toll would cost us about the same as six full-time officers.
So we're flat, we're essentially flatlining the department. We're just looking at another way. But, you know, if we add these six, tell us what the cost to over hire is for the year to keep them whole. Is it another, it's a six hundred thousand? So if we wanna boost him, we need six hundred thousand. I don't see that in another spot. And it's not in the vacancy calculations, 'cause that's already budgeted in.
I think when you say budgeted in, you mean swept away.
It, it is, I don't know if it's swept away. How, how would you explain it?
Again, when we budget salaries, we go into each individual and look at where they are and what the grade and step is, and calculate. We then go in and say, we know every year, everybody's not here. So we calculate a salary savings overall for all departments, because we know a small department like finance, there's gonna be some salary savings. It may not be this year. HR may have a bigger salary savings. So we do a general number for the entire city, and we calculate that in and put that in non-departmental as a salary savings. But we, so we calculate in salary savings, and we calculate in that there's going to be an officer leaving every month, probably.
Essentially, that's what I said. I mean, you're basically either asking them to hold them vacant, you're putting the salary, you're anticipating the salary savings, and you're calculating it into your budget, which is a different way, I guess, of saying what you're saying. But it's not there anymore. You, I mean, I've worked in government so many years, this, it's done everywhere. You anticipate, we're gonna save twenty percent, and you either have to hold it vacant to create your twenty percent, which is what the state made you do, or you budgeted it in, you know, so that it's taken away. So, so the point is, is this is just a radical idea, I understand. But could we, in this instance, not let the money retain in the police to use for the over hires? Instead of budgeting it in the non-departmental, leave it in the police department and use it for the over hire?
That would mean my overall budget would have to increase six hundred thousand. So I, it, it's, all the numbers coming up here is what is going out to the door. That six, you know, and actually, it's a little bit more than that in salary savings we project for the entire organization.
Is it like a million?
Yeah. It's like one point one, I think.
Right?
Oh, that's right. We reduced it to five hundred thousand this year. That's right, to make the budget balance. I forgot. Uh, so it's five hundred thousand, and that is in the non-departmental. So if I take that and move it into police, I still have to come up with that money somewhere else. So somebody has to, I have to reduce the budget somewhere else, or find some other fee increase.
Well, we got a spare six hundred thousand, apparently, in the city manager's.
Um, I do have a question. So if I'm understanding correctly, so you get the six new officers, which is, you know, certainly from my perspective, there was a million things I would have liked to have funded, but it all came down to what was more important, officers or something else? And the officers won out. I mean, I, I don't have a single thing in this budget that's not police-related. And it's only police-related. It's officers, getting more officers. So you get the new academy started in January with these six additional bodies, okay? Are we looking at a gap? In other words, once we kick off that academy and those six get in, is the ship kind of righted, or are we forever in perpetuity needing to fix an ongoing issue?
You're always going to be behind, well. When that offi-, that, that position is in the academy, the chief probably can say, they're not on the street. They're, they're being trained. So as they're sitting up there at the training center being trained, they're not on the street. So they are a complement, but they are not on the, you know, performing their duties until they go out on the street and cut them loose after a year.
But what I'm saying is, once we cut those six loose, is the issue kind of corrected? Or is this issue of forced hire still gonna linger? I understand we need to figure out between here and eighteen months from now, but once we get those six through and on the street?
Once those six are through and on the street, if we had no more retirements, then we wouldn't have an issue. But we can't anticipate that that's not going to occur. Because the, the, the rate of retirements, it varies every year, but it, it really is about one a month. If not more, you know, sometimes you get four in a month. And that's the challenge, and that's where I say that it's, if we do the six, and we go up to three hundred and twenty-three sworn positions that are authorized by this council, and then we have a situation at the Reno Police Department where maybe three of those six don't make it through. They're funded. That's part of the three hundred and twenty-three number, so they're funded. So now we're at three hundred and twenty. And then let's say we have three retirements. Then we're at three hundred and seventeen again. So I have to scramble to get back up to that number, and hope that I don't have any retirements by the time I scramble and get up to that number. So that's why the over hires are beneficial. So in a perfect world, we'd get the six positions, and I'd be funded three hundred and twenty-three, and council would say, we have enough money. We found a million dollars. And I, every department's gonna say this, but we found this money to fund the over hires. So then I could anticipate, and when those people fail, I could plug it in. When people retire, I could plug in a new.
Maybe you have more flexibility with using the over hire system than just ga- adding six. I mean, I'm afraid we're taking away flexibility to, to, as you say, plug these holes and get these positions filled.
But you're getting six to the positive. So I mean, I mean, adding six additional officers is a, a, a great thing, and I think is what everybody agreed upon. We're trying to fix just a fundamental staffing.
The challenge of, of hiring police officers, because it does take a long time. It takes us, you know, a year to get these, these new hires on the street. And, and we just can't, some things you can't protect, predict. We don't have, um, we don't have that type of crystal ball, unfortunately, to know whether or not they're gonna make, like this last academy of twenty-one, we retained seventeen of them, which is almost unheard of. And, and, and the fact that we did such a good job, so we only lost four. That's not the norm. Usually the, the retention rate is a little bit lower than that, and then we got, we have retirements on top of that. So that's the challenge. I, I very much appreciate all the efforts that were brought forward by all of council on, on adding these bodies. And I agree, I think they're very important to add those positions within our agency. The challenge is going to be the over hires.
Well, let's talk about this, chief. When do you need to, when, to bu- build that January academy? When do you put out a call on a recruitment and set that academy?
So we test once a year.
Okay.
And we usually have, usually we have academies in June and January, right around there.
Okay.
Our next testing, I believe, so for the attrition that we've had up to this point, we've drawn from our last testing. And I believe there's four positions that are being filled for this upcoming academy to get us whole.
Okay.
Then our next testing will be in May.
Okay.
We should have a list by civil service in May or June. And so we'll have a list available, but if we don't have the positions, I can't, they won't give, I can't start working on some, I can't hire somebody if I don't have the position available.
Okay. I mean, maybe, you know, this could either be the point in time where I go off and talk about how, you know, we should look for other revenues, and particularly the local street funds out of the RTC seventy million gas tax money. And I thought I'd leave that off a little bit this time. But maybe, because we had such a tumultuous year last year, where we had to go into the stabilization and the contingency, is maybe we're, we're optimistic that we won't have to go there this year. And during the course of the year, we can revisit the budget with projections to see how we're doing to help his needs on the over hires as they go. You know, maybe we go ahead with six, or maybe we go ahead with four and, and give over hire. I, I don't know. I mean, if, if we can't find six hundred thousand dollars somewhere in this budget, then we can't help him beyond these six. I mean, it's, it's that clear.
Yeah, it is that clear. And, uh, you know, all year long, I want you guys to know, this was something that this council said that was a priority.
Then, you know...
I, I, just let me ask you, what level are we at now today? I mean, it was, we were nineteen seventy levels. I mean, I'm sure we're like...
So currently, we're at three hundred and seventeen sworn today. In nineteen ninety-one, we were at three hundred and fifteen. So with, and, and everybody knows that. This council knows that. Our square mileage has doubled. We were at fifty-five square miles. Now we're at a hundred and ten. We understand the challenges. And the men and women that work there have really done an incredible job to rise up to those challenges.
I mean, I'll tell you where I'm at. I'm prepared to go into the so-called surplus and sweep that thing for his over the higher authority right now. I know it's, it's one-time money that, but it'll give him over hire authority maybe this year to catch fully up. So if someone wants to throw out that list of the so-called surplus money we're showing and have it out there, you know, let's start from that dialogue. But if someone doesn't have a revenue option, or, or staff isn't coming up with our second best revenue option, we need to move on, in my mind.
Are you talking about the blight?
I am. I think that's what...
I, I'm kinda with you on that, Councilwoman Breck, 'cause I think of the fact that we allocated a portion of it, and we haven't spent time.
But I am, I mean, I'm a little disappointed. We've been talking about this all year long. Everyone knows how important this department is, I gotta say. So I'm a little frustrated.
But who are you frustrated with or at? I mean, do you want?
I'm, I'm a little frustrated with the budget process, because this, this is the one department we've all been saying, this has to be funded.
But are you recommending that, you know?
So I, I'm looking at staff to say, yes, we better, we better find a way to fund this. And I kinda feel like this is a broken record of last budget.
I heard it last year.
So why do I have to continue to feel like we're not being hurt? And, and this is frustrating to me, and I would agree with Councilwoman Breck, in the sense that if that, if that's the direction we need to go to find that, that over hire budget, I think we need to do it.
Madam Mayor, if, if I may real quickly, the, the, the formation of the downtown business organization, whether I, I agree with it or not, it's something that the rest of council is very adamant about. But one of the things that, that that does do is it, it takes sixty-two percent of the funding away from that downtown police special assessment district. And we haven't seen an equivalent of changing of tasking of officers down there. There's nineteen officers are tasked to that assessment district. There's been a sixty-two percent reduction in that. And I'm not saying that those officers need to go away, but they need to be, the twelve officers that are no longer funded by the assessment district, need to go into the chief's pool so that they can designate where those people go. They're gonna spend most of their time downtown anyway, because that's where the calls are. But this gives them the flexibility to move those people where they need them under different circumstances, rather than them being tasked to, to downtown regardless of what the circumstances are. And it just gives him more ability to utilize them so that he can use his staffing better. It's, it's a pretty simple formula. They, the funding was reduced by sixty-two percent. You reduce officers by sixty-two percent, it's twelve officers, that it gives him flexibility to utilize as he needs to, which is a benefit to the department as well.
Well, that's a good question. And tell me this, Mr. Chisel, is that assessment, um, is that still? How, where are we at in the BID process in terms of that budget segment?
Robert Chisel, for the record, I, I can't answer that. I haven't been involved in that.
Those are, those, that money, though, is, is taking care of, you know, the three seventeen or three twenty-three, right? It's still paying for those positions?
Well, the downtown police maintenance, or downtown police district gets about one point eight, one point nine million dollars of revenue. However, the nineteen officers actually cost us more like two point seven million, two point eight million. So that, along with the maintenance district, loses, or is supplemented by the general fund by about nine hundred thousand per year.
But if the council decides to go forward with the BID, that one point nine for police needs to be backfilled to maintain?
Our, our understanding is that one point nine stays with police.
Okay.
That in this budget, there is a re-, uh, money from the general fund and room tax and the amount of five hundred thousand that is going to, directly to the downtown maintenance organ-, or management organization, the DMO.
I think the BID is something that is either next year's budget, 'cause, you know, we go through those assessments annually, and we're, and this is the time we're doing it, or it's something we need to watch near, near the year. I mean, I think we've heard the chief, if we can find the, the money from the surplus blight funds, and put, feel comfortable putting that to the over hire, uh, let's do that. And I don't know, is there a slide of what are in the leftover in those blight fu-, blight funds? Is there a slide of that right now?
If I can, if I might jump in here real quickly.
Go right ahead.
It's pretty clear to me what the council sentiment is on this. So I would suggest that you allow us to go back and look at the issue of police over hire, and what we can do to put us in a better position to get as close, if not right at, the three twenty-three that we're talking about. I think the chief made it pretty clear is, at the end of the day, it's gonna be very difficult to hit this spot on, because we can't end up with two hundred and thirty officers, because now we'd have to go find somebody to lay off to come and balance. So it's this, it's gonna be management. No matter what any of us say here, it's gonna be a management. It's gonna be something that we need to be flexible to try to predict and hit on. So we'll come back with more resources to address this. Um, rather than get specific on the dollar amount, I'd ask the council to give us that direction. We'll go back. We'll meet with the chief, we'll meet with the finance and budget staff, and we'll come up with a solution to address the concerns of council.
Okay. Thank, thank you, and, um, I appreciate that. I think, I, I think during the cycle last year, um, I thought we had corrected this last year, or at least set the wheels in motions to correct it. So, um, it's unfortunate that we're here today, kinda dealing with the same thing. I was kind of excited that we had found enough money in the budget and scraped enough up to add more officers, to only hear that, well, there's actually still a net, uh, negative that's occurring due to the retirements and stuff. So, yeah, I think we're looking for a global fix to ultimately increase the number of officers on any given day on the street to meet our explosive growth and all the issues that we're having, both in downtown and all the outer lying areas. And I would just remind this council that the Business Improvement District, um, you know, while downtown is the largest calls for service, there will be a point where the Business Improvement District and the Navigators, uh, ambassadors will hopefully mitigate some of those non, you know, emergency calls to free you all up to do, um, police work that you were trained and, and are experts in doing, maybe in other areas other than downtown. So that's, that's the ultimate goal. I know we've, we're a little ways away from that. But, yes, um, I think it's important that we, that we fix the, the over hire issue.
And, and just to reply to that, just so the council knows, I know this is a budget hearing, but, um, at the Reno Police Department, we've made a lot of steps to help some of those numbers as well, because we all know that three hundred and twenty-three isn't enough. That's not a big secret. Um, but we do have regional partners now that we haven't had in the past, where we can use some resources that we haven't had. Um, we have our PSS at the front desk that handle an enormous amount of the calls that we were sending sworn to. Uh, so we're doing some real good things, um, department-wide, um, to address that explosive growth that you speak of. Um, but it is, it's, it's keeping up is, is the challenge.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may. Um, I would be remiss to, if I did not mention that, you know, this area, police service, is one of the, the biggest areas that I hear from my ward constituents, that they would like more service. And you know it. We, we have had many conversations, uh, the chief and I. We've sat down, we've worked through it. I mean, a lot of it is people just feeling like they're, they're being hurt, or they're being paid attention to, or that we recognize a burglary happened, or that we've got it in our system. So, there's a communication piece too, that, that he and I have chatted about. But, and I, and I know it's in the North Valleys as well. We're just very short in those areas, much shorter than we'd like to be. You, you said that you thought you'd be able to reapportion staff in a way to, to get some more staff to the North Valleys, get some more staff to the South, and, and that is extremely appreciated. You know, you told us that about two, two weeks ago. Um, so there's that, and, and then somehow, within all this, and you do magic, so this is part of your magic, is we've gotta get it so that when they do their online reports, they, they get a callback. It's not just the automatic, you know, electronic, we received your report. Because that is probably the one thing that I get the most. I used to get the most complaints about that. They go in the au- that, that they can't, uh, file a report in the office, you know, and you, and I have heard tremendous, uh, compliments about what you've done with, quote, the front office staff. In other words, the people that are taking reports, the way you've reapportioned the offices where they, they can do some of this in private. Um, the fact that you have staffed it with people that are more knowledgeable, let's say, or more capable of taking these reports. All of that is not gone unnoticed. I mean, that is fantastic stuff. And I think in continuing these little bits of improvements, so that, especially on the reporting end, they know it was received and that even if we can't solve their crime, we know it happened, we've got it in our log. They just need to know that. And those are conversations I've had with the chief, and that makes a big difference with the way people feel about things, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor Jordan. Um, yeah, and I th- I think it's important. I know that, um, Councilmember Delgado, uh, was a big advocate of the blight funds and some of the neighborhood, uh, improvement grants that, uh, is that the right terminology?
Yeah.
That, uh, he has advocated for his neighborhood. So, uh, I think absent having Oscar here too, I, I'd like to hear from him. Um, I think we all agree, the priority is certainly our safety personnel. But I think it's important that we hear from Oscar on this one, um, also.
And I can add to the blight piece a little bit as well. Um, with more police, uh, you're gonna have less blight.
Fair.
Right.
Fair. You know, can, I'm gonna throw something out here, and this is something that I have talked to some people about, and I've never, I think part of our role is to, you know, to do something the way it's always been done, simply for that reason, doesn't always make it the right reason. I think, I think we are tasked particularly in these times of point-two revenue growth, uh, point-two percent revenue growth. We have to get creative, get different, and lean on the private sector in many ways that maybe we've traditionally not had to do in the past. Something that I've always wondered, so the, higher education does an exemplary job of creating endowments and, uh, estate contributions that go towards building the science center. You know, you get the, the building named after this, and there's lots of capital improvement monies. I've always wondered why, we have incredibly generous people in our community. Those foundations and those major contributors generally only give monies to capital improvement projects, because it's one-time money. I've always wondered if there was, you know, the community understands that there's a great need in the policing of our community. If someone came up with a capital improvement, funding, ongoing funding mechanism, could some of your capital improvement monies at the, the police department be moved over to the personnel side? Or, and/or, this is to the private companies out there and endowments, or, or organizations and foundations, is there no way to cre- create an endowment and say, I'm gonna fund Reno police, I'm gonna fund in perpetuity because my estate dictates it so, two officers for fifteen years? I mean, why, has that model ever been proposed anywhere?
It's been proposed, but it's very challenging. Um, it's a lot easier to give that money to specific, um, I don't know, like our K-nine unit, um, schools, uh, different areas, and it's, you know, it's their money. And they certainly have the oversight as to where that goes, but they have been very, very, um, gracious over the years in helping us out, uh, with certain things like equipment, vests for our dogs, uh, and many other things that otherwise we would have to pay for. Um, but yeah, there's some challenge there.
Do you have a half a million dollars in capital monies that you spend on any given year between all of the, you know, let's say you're doing a renovation at the police department, or you're, I mean, what is, what is that amount? I, I'm just trying to see if there was somebody out there that said, hey, I can't do an endowment forever for personnel for, because of all the attachments to it and the fluctuations in it, but I can dedicate half a million dollars to the Reno Police Department every year, and then you could move that line item over.
Well, you know that we had the, I think it was one point one million is what it was for the improvements to the station.
Yeah.
They're redoing the locker rooms now, they repainted the building, done some work on the outside. We've been looking at parking. So you always have those things, those type of capital improvement, uh, which, yeah.
So if you could, if you could cover those, you could offset that and put it, but you'd have to get a commitment for a long time. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The other, um, I just wanted to ask, maybe, Mr. Chisel, when I look at, um, if I compare fire, the fire department and the Reno department, fire's going up, looks like by ten percent. And then, I think, police is going up.
By three and four percent.
So why the difference?
Uh, it, it's just the way the numbers work. I, I will say, they're, uh, the salary increases for police are tied to CPI for July first. That's about two and a half percent, two point six percent. Uh, fire is going up, uh, two percent for the IAAF. So there is a slight difference there. It's just how the steps are working out, uh, that it is, uh, larger increase for fire than police. Their, fire is not increasing their staffing.
And they're, they're an, they're an older force, right, at this point?
Well, then, then in here, it says, then they, uh, they have five hundred thousand for overtime.
Yes. We, a couple of years ago, we had taken five hundred thousand out of their budget because the, the intent was to provide them additional staff. We never provided them the additional staff and never put the overtime money back in, so we put the money back in.
And that's what keeps our two stations open with the two personnel crew.
To keep the stations open, yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the difference. Not that one is, you know, I, I don't want people to think that I'm thinking one is better than the other, but I think, you know, these are departments that we find, um, that are incredibly important, right? This is what this council has really focused on, is public safety. So, I just really wanna look at these with a fine-tooth comb. All right, so any other questions? None? But I think staff has a clear direction. We need to find that six hundred thousand dollars. And, I mean, I'm sorry, but if it comes to really tearing apart this budget and taking a few out of everyone's budget to get there, I think that's where we're gonna go. So. And just really quickly, and you may or may not know this, a city our size, how, how many officers do they have on staff, a city our size? When, when I go to conference of mayors now, they stress that, um, our population is a medium-sized city. And now, and everyone knows, it's no surprise that Reno is growing incredibly fast by leaps and bounds. And Councilwoman Dewar mentioned it, that she keeps hearing from her NABs, more police officers, more police officers. Well, in, in my office, um, I get, I get inundated with requests for more officers um, on, on the streets.
So, what I will say is that our city is very unique, um, and I'm going to talk just for a moment about the bid, um, and some of these resources that are being proposed to, to, uh, being mov- uh, moved into downtown Reno. That will help, um, uh, our department in terms of dealing with, like, the mentally ill and things that take a lot of time, a lot of resources off of the street. Uh, in terms of just sheer numbers, I wanna say, last time I looked, we were at about one point three, four, uh, per thousand. And, uh, a city of this size should be closer to one point seven. But, we are also, you know, unfortunately, we have a tax structure that's very challenging in terms of generating revenue. And, again, um, I'm not saying this just because all you're standing in front of me. We've done, we've taken great strides in growing our police department, not only with our sworn personnel, uh, but with our non-sworn personnel as well. And I appreciate all the effort, uh, and the concern that you have, uh, for this community in terms of public safety. We have a ways to go, but we're, we're moving in the right direction.
Well, and, and that BID, honestly, I do believe it will eliminate some of that Band-Aid that it does to you guys where it stretches you so thin down there, because you're playing so many different roles down there. And so, honestly, this will give you more resources to be in other parts of the community.
And as Councilman McKenzie pointed out, for the, having the leverage to, um, move some of these positions, uh, that are vital for certain areas within the city, that is important. Uh, as a police chief, you know, you have to analyze, you know, north, south, um, and central, and, and best utilize what resources we have available to us to keep our city as, as safe as we can keep it. There's a lot of challenges out there.
And, and I agree with you, but I, I also stress that downtown is much more, it's much different than our neighborhoods. And it has to be treated differently.
It is.
And it's like a city inside a city.
And it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That's another challenge that we have, that a lot of other cities that have, you know, some more races don't have. They don't have that, uh, constant demand on public safety twenty-four hours a day. There's a lot of communities that have police that go home at three in the morning and they come back at seven, 'cause it's such a smaller community. We just don't have those luxuries here. So, I, again, I commend everybody for, um, addressing public safety.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, just finally, all I wanna say is I, um, just think that's why downtown has to be a top priority. The police department has to be a top priority, and that's what we've been saying. If we really, truly wanna clean up downtown, like we say we do, then we'll make it a priority. And remember, I want people to remember this, this is very important, that, um, in Reimagine Reno, downtown was the number-one area that people wanted to see, um, cleaned up. And I get, everyone's got neighborhoods and wards, and those matter too. They do matter. But, uh, we will never change the face of downtown if it's not done now. Vice, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you very much. I'm trying to remember, because it was, what, five hours ago? What did we decide on the council donation funds? We were gonna source them to see if they could, some of those, um, efforts or initiatives could come from CDBG or from somewhere else? Or did we give staff direction to keep it at its current level? 'Cause I'm at the point where maybe we just eliminate it altogether. And, and that money goes into this. I mean, what, what did we decide?
You, you gave us direction to, um, add the money back.
Do that.
So we gave you direction to add it back up to its prior levels, um, but in light of this discussion we just had, could we not just find a hundred thousand dollars by cutting it down? Just tossing it out there. I mean, we're at the point where, and I think this council has been very prudent, and it's not down to dollars.